I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all will have to bear with us tonight. We are starting our new board docs, programming as board members, and it's new. We've had one training on it, and so far it's kicked me out about three times, so bear with us, we'll try to get through this. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I recommend that the school board approve the agenda for the March 3, 2020 meeting.
The school board can approve the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan.
Second.
Ms. Carter, second. Any discussion? Are we voting on this yet? I just want to know what button did. Can we just say, "All in favor"?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? First.
Do you need help getting in?
Yeah. Y'all go ahead.
All right.
Wherever technology doesn't work, let's go.
Yep. All right. We now need to amend the approved agenda. We have under item F, F1 Personnel Report. We have an amendment to that. Does everybody approve the amendment to the personnel report?
Is amendment here with us?
It's in the document.
It's in docs, okay.
We've got another amendment to that. I want to do them all at the same time.
I've moved that we amended.
Amend the personnel report. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On the consent agenda, we also have a number of regulations that we moved to the consent agenda, and I think there's an interest in moving one of them to unfinished business that deals with KBR. It's a regulation that deals with the public information.
May I make a motion to move that item to the unfinished business so we can discuss that?
KBR. Okay. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Any discussion? All in favor of moving that to the unfinished business? Please raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, okay. Now that moves us to B, the Notice of Closed Meeting. Oh, we have one more?
Special presentation? Yeah.
I thought, oh, we had that added in my...
It's hidden.
It's hidden. All right, so we have...
Until you move it.
Until I move it. All right, we have to add one more special presentation, under the section C. Recognition of State Wrestling Champion.
Move that, we make that movement change.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So now we've made all the moves. Can we make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go into, the superintendent recommends that the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code, Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1, the appointment, assignment, promotion, demotion, performance, salary, discipline, or resignation of a principal and assistant principal. Is our motion to go into closed meeting?
Move to go in closed session.
Dr. Nillis. Dr. Gupta, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now going to a short closed meeting in room 206.
I'll leave my phone here.
Dr. Edwards was called away for a phone call, so... Who, Copeland's gonna take her part, do her share until she's able to get back with us. The first thing we need to do is to certify that the school board come out of the closed meeting and that we certify that nothing was spoken about in the closed meeting other than what was stated in our statement. I move that the Lynchburg School Board certify that in the closed meeting just concluded nothing was discussed except the matter of matter specifically identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting and lawfully permitted to be so discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I made the motion, a second.
Second.
All right, we have to take a roll call vote. Are we voting online now?
Yes.
And where, uh, right there?
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
No. Up there. No.
You surf, I miss Dr. Coleman.
Yes, I do.
You didn't.
Did it verbal out?
Mom popped up at the bottom.
Mom popped up.
Did you get them, Kristy?
I got Dr. Coleman's, yes.
You didn't get mine?
Yes, I only got...
Did you get it? Mine didn't pop up.
Are you on the closed meeting tab?
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right, now that takes us to the special presentation. The first one is a very exciting one, recognition of state wrestling champion. Dr. Copeland.
So if I could have Coach Stanberry and Spencer Goolsbee administer...
So, if I could have Coach Stanberry and Spencer Goolsbee and Mr. Beatty, you're here, come on up. On Saturday, February 22nd, Spencer Goolsbee, who's a senior at Heritage High School, made history by being the first Heritage High School wrestler in the school's 44-year history to win a state championship in the 220-pound weight class. Coach Stanberry, this was his first year with Heritage High School coaching the wrestling team. Spencer joins Alvin Snead, who was an EC glass student in 1987, as the second wrestler in LCS history to win a state, or as the first wrestler to win the state championship. And he was actually coached by Coach Stanberry's father. So, the Stanberries have a history of wrestling and they've done a great job with students. Coach, you want to say anything about Spencer? And Spencer, you can say anything you want to also.
Yeah, first, myself and staff and Spencer, we would like to thank Lynchburg City Schools School Board for your support. Teachers like myself and coaches would not be able to do our job without your support. Also, Lynchburg City School Administration, Dr. Edwards and Copeland, Heritage High School Administration, Dr. Beatty, Mr. Beatty and Mr. Knight for all their support. And we're just very thankful for everything y'all do for us. It was Spencer, you know, not only was a unique moment for him being the first state champion at Heritage High School and to follow up with Dr. Copeland saying, it was very unique for myself to put my name right beside my father's name as coach and our first state champion in Lynchburg City Schools at that school. But also the other coaches on staff and myself, there was four of us that wrestled at Heritage High School and we all had a dream when, you know, when we were wrestling to be a state champion. So, we got the second best thing, we were able to help and coach a fine young man like Spencer Goolsbee to be the first state champion. Spencer encompasses everything the student athlete is about at Lynchburg City Schools and at Heritage High School. He's not only a great athlete on the mat, but off the mat, he's an all-around student. On the football field, he was an all-state football player and also on the state champion team last year. He's a great student all the way around, he'll be attending Glenville State next year. And we're sure are gonna miss him. And it was a good start for our program this year and we're hoping for many more. Thank y'all.
Mike's yours.
I would like to thank Heritage High School for being behind my back the last four years. Mr. Beatty's been behind my back, the best principal in the world. Coach Stanberry, it's his first year, but I feel like I've known him my whole life. He's such a good mentor and helped me become the best wrestler I could be and the best athlete I could be. And I wouldn't be here without him. Or Coach Sacks, Coach Sacks the last four years has helped me become the person I am today. And I just want to thank my mom for pushing me every day, yelling at me when I don't do work. My dad being the good cop, so. Thank you.
Congratulations. I never get to be on this side of the mic. So, on behalf of Lynchburg City Schools, we would like to congratulate you on being the first, the first wrestling state champ for Heritage High School. Congratulations. Got a little certificate for you. There we go. Thank you, thank you. That now brings us to our second special presentation. And Dr. Edwards, I think Mrs. Gillette's gonna do the honors this one? Yes, she is. Jody, it's all yours. Another great occasion. So, this is a wonderful, wonderful honor and opportunity for us to celebrate and recognize some folks in the community who are extremely supportive of our schools, wonderfully supportive of our kids, and it's what makes this community great. It's one of those nights that I love to pause and say, hey, let's pack the room and celebrate. So, I'm not gonna steal the thunder, I'm gonna let Ms. Gillette start and then it's just gonna get better.
Fantastic, thank you very much, Dr. Edwards, Chairperson Morrison, Vice Chair, Dr. Coleman, and School Board members, good evening. My name is Jody Gillette and I'm the Executive Director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. I'm here this evening with a few special guests as we prepare to announce the 2019, 2020 LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient. So, we'll announce a few of our guests now and a few will be announced in a few minutes deeper into our program. So, with us this evening to help us with this little celebration is Deisha Womack, who's the Director of Secondary Counseling, and Rose Flower, who's the Assistant Principal at EC Glass, and Dr. Steve Smith from the Director of the Central Virginia Governor School. So, if you all want to stand, thank you. And also have several trustees from the Education Foundation who are also here to help celebrate with us this evening. I have my Vice President here, Mac Frankfurt, Julie Doyle, Steve Lob, Beverly McCloskey, and if you all can stand too. Don't be shy. And my President, Mr. Kevin Smith, who actually will share a few words with you at this time.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here.
Yes, well, thank you, thank you for having us. And the LCS Education Foundation is just absolutely thrilled to participate in the announcement of this year's recipient of the Excellence in Science Scholarship. The mission statement of the Ed Foundation is to advance excellence and equity in the Lynchburg City Schools through advocacy and educational funding. And tonight, we get to focus on the excellent part of that mission statement. And tonight, we are here to award a student a scholarship based on her hard work and academic achievement and also to celebrate the school system which encouraged her and fostered her success. The Excellence in Science Scholarship is a unique offering that blends public and private resources in a way that benefits all of the community stakeholders. In particular, this scholarship positively impacts the students by giving them something to shoot for and providing post-secondary scholarship to one particular student. It also is helpful to our STEM programs by encouraging students to participate in the science offerings that the School Division has. It is helpful to the School Division as well, it is an opportunity to show your commitment to excellence in the Lynchburg City Schools. And it also helps our community's economic health by providing a local workforce that is well-versed and well-educated in the sciences. So, without further ado, I'll turn it back over to Jody to give you a little bit of history and also to call out the people who have made this scholarship possible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. So, to share a little history, in the fall of 2013, Dr. Charles Pryor and his family announced a four-year, $25,000 scholarship to be awarded every school year for four consecutive years to an outstanding senior interested in entering a science-related field of study. Dr. Pryor is a graduate of both EC Glass High School and Virginia Tech. He spent 25 years with the Babcock and Wilcox Company, serving as President of the Nuclear and Power Division. While in Lynchburg, Dr. Pryor served as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board and past Chairman of the Lynchburg City Schools Partner and Education Program. So, he has a long history of valuing and supporting public education and understands the important role that strong schools play in the success of our students and the economic health of our community, and we thank him for his vision. After taking a year off, we were thrilled to be able to announce the return of the Excellence in Science Scholarship to the Lynchburg City Schools for five consecutive years, beginning last year during the 2018-2019 school year. This scholarship was designed once again for a top science or engineering student who plans to continue their education at an accredited college or university in a science or engineering-related field. Scholarships clearly benefit the student recipients as awarded funds ease the financial burden of an advanced education and creates room for students to take advantage of often unpaid research and internships that contribute to their educational experience and professional development. But a scholarship such as this benefits more than just the student recipient. Lynchburg continues to grow as a national leader in nuclear engineering and a regional leader in medicine. Our community is also an incubator for entrepreneurship and host to many small, medium, and large engineering and manufacturing firms, all of whom rely on a workforce that offers strong math and science skills. In order to be a thriving community and support these industries, it is essential that we maintain strong public schools to cultivate and attract new employers and retain top employees. This Excellence in Science Scholarship is a unique offering, not often seen in public school settings, and is designed to work toward this goal. In the rebooted version of the LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship, the funding pool has been expanded and this year's scholarship would not be possible without the vision, extreme generosity, and commitment from our sponsors. The Education Foundation and the Lynchburg City Schools would like to take this opportunity to recognize and extend our most sincere appreciation to the following sponsors for the opportunities that they are extending to our students and the prestige that they are bringing to our School Division. So, Dr. Edwards, if you don't mind coming towards this way so I can give you a plaque to then give to each sponsor, that would be great. So, first, from BWX Technologies is Mr. Joel Birch, who is the Vice President and General Manager, BWXT Nuclear Operations Group Lynchburg. Come on down. And actually, if you don't mind, going around this way. And there'll be, there's a, behind Dr. Coleman is about your zone. Keep going all the way around, keep going around. That's good, just hang out there for a minute. Alright, from Framatome, we have Ms. Denise Worley, the VP of Communications. Wait, wait, I have a plaque, sorry, sorry.
Let's try this again.
We also have a donor who could not be here this evening, and that's the DTE Energy Foundation. And another sponsor was not able to be here this evening, that's Mr. and Mrs. Lee and Sharon Ainsley. And our next honoree here is, well, sponsor are Dr. and Mrs. David and Judy Franz, and Judy Franz is here with us this evening. And last, but certainly not least, Dr. and Mrs. Charles and Mary Jane Pryor, and I know, I don't know if you want to take the mic at all, but you're certainly welcome to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and members of the School Board, thank you for your service to the community and what you do. I also want to call out individuals that are in the school system or working with the school system that really make this happen in a very organized manner. Not with us tonight is Maria Jaeger, who works on this, Deisha Womack, and Jody Gillette does a fantastic job with the foundation and in putting this together. Quite a, you know, quite a challenge to take all these applications that come in, wind them down to four or five, and then we have to sit there as kind of an evaluation committee, and it's the worst thing in the world to have to walk away and not give every one of them who are bright, right up in the top of their class and really high achievers, it's just hard to pick one person to do that, but we do it, and I think it's a, it's a good program for Lynchburg City Schools, so thank you.
You can either stand or come back. So, now I want to turn it over to Dr. Tommy Coleman, who is right here, right behind me here, to actually make the big announcement.
Good evening, everyone. It's my distinct honor and pleasure to come before you this evening to announce the 2020 recipient of the Excellence in Science Scholarship Award. The Excellence in Science Scholarship Comprehensive Application Process was launched to the students in November and was opened through January the 17th. At that time, the applications were due to the Director of School Counseling at each of the two high schools. The school-based teams was assembled to review the applications and the top five from each high school advanced to the team in the central office, who then scored the applications based on a standardized rubric. The award is being given to the top senior science student as determined by the selection process. The process included a written application, a letter of interest, three letters of recommendation, an official transcript, and the top five finalists completed interviews with the selection committee. Before I announce the recipient, I would like this opportunity, take this opportunity to thank everyone who made the scholarship a reality, the sponsors, the LCS Education Foundation, as well as the Counseling Directors, Principals, and Teachers. Would also like to give a special thanks to Dr. Pryor, whose vision and support has provided this amazing opportunity to the Lynchburg City Schools students. And now for the announcement, this year's recipient is an outstanding graduating senior who attends both Central Virginia Governor's School and EC Glass High School. To provide a little history, the student has always loved logic. In the middle school, our recipient remembers raving to her mom about how sensible, or how sensibly the periodic table was organized after her first introduction to chemistry. Sophomore year, the student discovered science for what it was, logic with the creativity of discovery. Her first deep personal obsession with science was with the physics behind music theory, the beautiful logical patterns exhibited in chords and scales which led to her first real experience with research. How can vibrating air sound so beautiful, or so wrong, depending on the combination of keys struck on a keyboard? Through that research, she learned that the big question can go on from daunting to exciting. More recently, at Governor's School, the student discovered that her passion for physics, which was, which has led to her research project on the speed of light and variances due to the different types of glass to the study of fiber optics efficiency. Tonight, the recipient has received a first-place Regional Naval Science Award in Physics, second-place Regional Naval Science Award in Physical Science, and her research earned her third-place recognition in physics at statewide competition. Her passion for and commitment to science is clear, and wherever she ends up attending college, we know that she'll be successful. This year's LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient embodies the very essence of what this scholarship was designed to honor. It is indeed my privilege to announce the 2019-2020 LCS Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient, Ms. Laurel Logan.
Wonderful.
It gives me great pleasure to give this to someone who appreciates the. this possible, but also LCS and everyone behind the scenes that, and all the teachers, both at Glass and Gov. School, who have led me to discover how much I love science, and I'm super excited. Thank you, guys.
Stand up right where there's that. And then we get a picture, and Dr. Edwards, if you want to go back to your seat when you. The worst part, pictures. Congratulations. I think we'll have to scooch in. Scooch in. Yeah, I'm just. I'll try to get the whole board, I'll step back, and then I'll first, I'll get, Dr. Millis, do you want to be in or scooch? Why don't you scooch out just this one time, and then I'll get a whole chair and everybody. Well, let's just scooch out. Okay. Yeah, I'm in, yeah. If I can't get everybody in, I just want to be safe. All right, here we go, I'm gonna do a couple, or just keep on. Wait a minute. All right, I'm gonna step back then and do the, do the whole board, if you guys want to lean forward. If that's. You're killing me.
Somebody do it, Susan, help me somebody.
Here we go. Come on, we're gonna endorse it. All right, one, two, three, we're doing a couple, just in case some other clips. Awesome. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'm in.
Right here for one second, one more thing, one more little thing.
I don't know. Oh, Susan Rexon, that's.
So one member of this year's team couldn't actually be here this evening, and he wanted to be sure to give a special, extra special message of congratulations, so if we could please see.
Hello, Laurel Logan. I would like to congratulate you on being the 2019 Excellence in Science recipient, and your essay was just simply amazing, you know, the interplay between creativity, chemistry, logic, and all these things that one day may lead you to a PhD to help save people's lives, to help people have a better life on this planet. I had an experience with the chemistry set when I was a kid, and it blew my mother's living room up, and that led to lots of curiosity and lots of adventure in science and engineering, and eventually helping me get to space. And I just want to say, it's an honor to read your essay, but the bigger honor will be to watch your journey and your legacy as you go forward. So I'm gonna give you a copy of my book, Chasing Space, and let you see the journey that I went through, because some of these things you maybe can glean from and use along your way as you become a PhD scientist one day, or leading a team, or really doing whatever you want to do. So God's be on your journey. Thank you, Jody Gillette, School Board, and Charlie Pryor, for this incredible opportunity as being the Excellence in Science recipient. God's be on your journey.
Your rights. It doesn't get much better. That now takes us to public comments. In accordance with Policy B, DDH Public Participation, the School Board welcomes requests and comments as established in the guidelines within that policy. Individuals who wish to speak before the School Board shall have an opportunity to do so at this time. Persons appearing before the School Board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the School Board on issues that do not conserve the services, policies, role, and/or responsibility of the School Board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit his/her comments to five minutes. The representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of the presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at School Board meetings is 30 minutes. The Board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time, and we have seven speakers tonight. First speaking, Robert Flood.
I'd like to thank y'all again, the School Board, and Dr. Edwards, giving me this chance to express my feelings about how I feel about the exit funders and not being able to volunteer. I think in the last School Board meeting, you know, we was talking about felonies, and I think we got on must-amenas and bar crimes, and I looked up, you know, a few things since the last School Board meeting, and realized that if a judge dropped a felony to a must-amena, that's what it is. Regardless how we like it or not, if a judge says a must-amena, that's what it is. But people would look at it a little different, where he had a felony first, now he got a must-amena. But they make the laws, and all we can do is go by them. We might don't agree with a lot of way the system work, because sometime, we know, can be very unfair unless you got some money, or you know somebody, and you could get a must-amena instead of felony, all of a situation that maybe should have been a felony. I listened to Dr. Edwards was explaining and laid out a plan, basically the last time when I can remember, since 2014, it's closer now than it has been, that all you gotta do is vote on it. And I like her plan, I like what she laid out, case by case. Person can be screened, and you can talk to the person, and they can talk to you about what happened to them, because a lot of people look like me, get charges and get cases, and you don't know the circumstance behind it. And it might be, might have could have been, end up being a different situation if he had money, or he wasn't poor, or was he, or if he wasn't black. And we know how the system work, and a lot of people, you know, get caught up in that situation where they branded for life. Once you get a felony on your record in Virginia, you can't get the explanation. So hopefully, they are in the process of trying to amend it a different way. I think Virginia is the only state right now, a few other states, if you apply for a job, you might not have, never been in trouble a day in your life, and all of a sudden, you apply for that $75,000 job, and you qualify, they see that piece of paper, throw the paper in the trash. Not meeting you, not knowing who you are, not giving you a chance to explain what happened. That's something gotta change, because to me personally, there number Jim Crow law that still exists, and they changing names, they changing things around a little bit, but it's still, still the same old thing 20 years now, 40 years ago. We have to change things, we have to give a person a chance. That's why I continue, and I will continue to come up here to argue for exit funders with nonviolent crimes, they able to volunteer to help, help the school system, to help the kids that look like them, that they might can communicate with more than somebody that don't. That's all we are here to help, the ones that have went to the school and said they can't volunteer because of our exit funding, I think it was 34 or 36, all of them was black. Now, we still talking about this 20, since 2014, and I know y'all got more important things to jump on, and to keep on going back and forth with this, but I'm not going nowhere. And I like what you're doing, at least you opened up your minds and thinking about it. How can we work together to make this work as a whole, not me just talking about it all the time, or somebody else? How can we come together to help save these kids, or at least play a part in their lives? Just because you're an exit funder don't mean you're not a human being, because you was a human being before you got and became an exit funder, before they got in trouble. Meet that person, find out who that person is, find out what the circumstances were, why they got their felony on the record. And I know that when you apply for a job in the school system, must-amenas and felonies are on their sheet, but we haven't been talking about must-amenas, talking about felonies since 2014. Thank y'all.
My name is Janice Wiley, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. I'm a retired teacher as of 2017, and I'm here with an attitude of gratitude for the Lynchburg City Schools. 10 years ago, I was recognized as the 2010 Lynchburg City School Teacher of the Year, and my home school was Hutcheson Early Learning Center. The next fall, I was recognized as the Region Five Virginia Teacher of the Year, and this was a really exciting time for me, and I proudly represented Lynchburg City Schools. I want to thank the Board and all of my friends that have worked with me in Lynchburg City Schools, because everyone that I have met, from custodians to food service people, bus drivers, instructional assistants, principals, administrators, everyone has made a big impact on my life, and you all helped me become the teacher that I was, and hopefully still am, even though I'm not actively teaching. The people, and all the people, and staff at Hutcheson, the children, the parents, the White Rock community, really helped Hutcheson become a, just a beaming light for all children with early, with early childhood special needs, and also with pre-K. And since he's sitting right here, I want to say thank you to Dr. Copeland, he helped rehab our school. We had to leave for a few years and return, and he said he would work hard to get us back home, and he did, and I thank you very much. That meant a lot to me. After I volunteered and substituted for about a year, I found a new home in Lynchburg City Schools, and that is in the warehouse at Lynchburg City Schools. There is a wonderful, magical program there, where Ann Berry leads Kathy Gegner and myself to make elementary school science boxes for every teacher in every elementary school from eight, from the grades of kindergarten through fifth grade. That's a lot of science kits, and they are amazing. If you have not had the opportunity to come and see our place that we call the Palace, I invite you to come. I want to thank each one of you on the School Board for all the time and effort that you spend, because I can see when I watch the School Board meetings how much you have researched and studied, and I know that you've had to give a lot of your personal time, and you work hard in another job and come back to this one. So I thank you for the time you spend, and I just urge you, can I say one more thing? I urge you, as you're thinking about all of the work that you're doing for the School Board, that you also keep in mind all of your teachers and staff members, and consider all the time and effort that they spend off the clock in order to make the school system a better place. Thank you, and I really do mean thank you.
Dr. Edwards, Madam Chair Morrison, Vice Chair, Dr. Coleman, to the rest of the esteemed members of the School Board, it's a pleasure to stand before you again this evening. My name is Reeson Chandler. I'm a leader of Lynchburg Chapter of Virginia Organizing. Virginia Organizing has 16 chapters across the state of Virginia, and we are proud to announce that we are celebrating the 25th anniversary this year. In that timeframe, they had come to Lynchburg to start a new chapter, and they recruited a young man like myself, who really has a disdain towards politics. But since that time, I've learned to respect those who work in politics. I've even learned to respect the process of democracy. It has taught me to be patient, it has taught me to listen constructively. And so, so it is, it is my attempt now to come to you, as I've learned that, that if you just work hard, if you press forward, the changes that are needed to help fortify and improve our community and our relationship within our community, they are there for us if we're willing to do the work, if we're willing to take the chances. I believe it was Mr. Douglas who said that without the struggle, there is no progress. So we have to face the struggle, and that's what politics has really taught me, has taught me that, that I have to be willing to face the struggle. And with that, I would like to say, we want to make sure that the proposal to add an orientation for gender identity to the nondiscrimination policy does not get lost, since the School Board canceled the work session on February 18th, that was supposed to include a discussion on, on the, on the subject. We hope that you will announce tonight when you plan to bring this matter up again. Also, as, as you deliberate the budget for the upcoming academic year, we hope that, you know, you will work diligently to, to raise the wages of the lowest-paid workers in the school system. 1128 is an hour, is not a living wage. Many people spend a lot of time trying to deal with high rate of poverty in Lynchburg, and now is the time that you can actually do something about it. It is a shame and a disgrace that our school system is doing so little to raise its own lower-wage working out of poverty, workers out of poverty. We hope you will move forward with, with plans to raise the wage of those so important to our students, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, and more. Thank you for allowing me this time to stand before you. Is there anything that I can do to support you, to help you in this endeavor? Please do not hesitate to ask me and the members of the Lynchburg Chapter, Virginia Organizing. Have a great evening.
I'm also here to talk about the anti-discrimination policy. I really don't have much to add to what I've already said before, because nothing has really been done since the last School Board public comment period. But I just want to start out by saying, well, I graduated from Glass in 2009, and I am finishing my degree at VCU right now, it'll be done in June. And my decision to VCU was really influenced by my horrible experience in the Lynchburg City School System, right? I chose a university that I knew had resources for my community. So I would really just like you to understand the experience of queer students experiencing abuse in a classroom from students, and having a teacher present, taking no action, and then having nowhere to go in the school system or any resources available. Also, when I wonder, I'm also kind of wondering, how do you plan to measure like the bias that exists within teachers in the school system? Because right now, students are protected under the guise of race and color, right? But we know that students. But we know that students of color are still experiencing bias and microaggressions. Also, is there any conversation about reforming the health classes to address issues within the queer community, like issues of consent, mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention? And like I said before, do not see this issue as ticking away from other issues. We still need to address issues like the achievement gap and the volunteer policy. These are all queer issues. I also really want to continue to push the idea of the LGBTQ task force, right? Because right now, queer people really don't have a say in the decisions and the conversations that are happening around this policy, right? And another place we see this right now is issues regarding ethnic students, right? Because right now, there's conversations of bringing in, changing the calendar to address religious minorities. But these communities aren't really present in the conversation. You know, they're not present in Equity Task Force, and there's a lot of other issues affecting that community that aren't being addressed. So when you make these big decisions without including the voices of the very communities that are affected, you marginalize those people even more, and that's what's happening with the queer community right now. And the queer experience cannot be understood through training, right? It takes listening to our voices and the diverse voices in our community to really make effective change. I'm also a little bothered by the idea that protecting queer students somehow puts the school system at risk. You know, queer people are at risk right now. You know, queer students are at risk. People have come out at this podium this semester. Every time we come here, we risk our safety, the relationship with our families, our faith communities, our ethnic communities, and our jobs, which is often connected to our healthcare. So I ask you to please make moves on this policy, because this community cannot wait. Thank you.
Emily Lamb.
Hello. My name is Emily Lamb. I am in graduate school for clinical mental health counseling, and I am the lead registered behavior technician at Family Insight. Family Insight is an accredited mental health agency, and our office serves Lynchburg families and has a contract with Lynchburg City Schools. I am also a member of the LGBT community and am here to express the importance of revising the non-discrimination and anti-harassment policies to better protect LGBT students and personnel. I'm also advocating for the formation of an LGBT Equity Task Force, as the current Equity Task Force does not have the capacity to adequately address issues that LGBT students continue to face. Everyone here today is concerned with the wellness and success of our students, and we are aware of barriers to this, such as race, indifferent ability, and socioeconomic status. And if Lynchburg City Schools wishes to demonstrate its motto of a tradition of excellence for all, we cannot overlook LGBT identification as an additional barrier, and we must take measures to diminish these barriers. Ensuring safety and support for this marginalized group is a simple step in the right direction. So I have two peer-reviewed journal articles with me. I can leave them with you if you'd like. First, a study published in the Journal of School Violence found that in-school victimization of LGBT students ages 13 to 21 predicted measurable decrease in self-esteem, lower GPA, and more missed days of school. However, various school supports, including a comprehensive anti-bullying and harassment policy, supportive educators, the Gay Straight Alliance, and an LGBT-inclusive curriculum significantly diminishes these issues. So in other words, if we can take just some simple steps in the right direction, you can expect to your queer students, whether they're out or not, whether the bullying is reported or not, their GPA could potentially go up, absences should go down. And to quote another peer-reviewed study, findings suggest that anti-bullying policies explicitly enumerating sexual orientation, gender identity, and/or gender expression protections can improve LGBT school experiences, and that generic policies that we currently have may not sufficiently protect LGBT students from bullying and harassment. So given these repeated findings in the literature, revision to the language in these policies, and the creation of a task force would protect vulnerable students and personnel, ensuring their well-being and excellence for all. Thank you. Does anyone want to take these journal articles?
Would you leave with the thank you?
Thank you.
Katie Seifert.
Hi. I am a Lynchburg City Schools graduate, a parent, and a teacher. I started teaching for Lynchburg City Schools in 2002, and I have to say that a lot has changed since then. In 2006, Virginia voters ratified an anti-marriage equality amendment. In 2015, a Burgaville v. Hodges struck that down. And yet, I've been hard-pressed in talking to my colleagues, because we don't recall receiving any guidance. As society has changed, how are we to ensure that we're being inclusive of our students and of the families and of the staff that we have in Lynchburg City Schools? This board was advised some months ago that our family life curriculum is a bit outdated and includes some references to traditional marriage and that sort of thing. So I would strongly encourage this board to consider updating our policies and our programming and offering guidance to the employees to make sure that we're being inclusive and providing excellence for each and every one of our students. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, my name is Carl Luce, and I am president of the Lynchburg Education Association, and I represent bus drivers and administrators, instructional assistants and cafeteria workers, maintenance employees and mechanics, nurses and office staff, full-time teachers, part-time teachers, and substitute teachers from pre-K through 12th grade. And all of us want you to know, the time to act is now. I cannot emphasize enough how difficult it is to work in LCS right now. At the school board meeting last month, it was discussed that healthcare costs were up compared to last year. That comes as no surprise to your employees who have been assaulted, injured, bullied, and threatened. They are frustrated, exhausted, fearful, and disheartened, and worse than that, they feel like no one hears them. The time to act is now. While no one wants to acknowledge it, no one wants to hear it, and for certain, no one wants to discuss it, we have students who simply should not be in a regular education setting. For a multitude of reasons, they can't handle it. It's not good for them, it's not good for their classmates, and it's not good for your staff. Kids make mistakes. It's a fact of life. Heck, adults make them too. And we have a discipline system in place that allows for more than 80% of kids to make a mistake, learn from that mistake, and move on from that mistake. It works for them. But there are also students in our buildings right now with as many as 30 referrals. That's about one referral every four days. We're not helping those students, we're not helping their classmates either, and for sure, we're not helping the educators who are handcuffed and trying to better the situation but have no more tools at their disposal. The time to act is now. Because if we don't act now, we're going to have to give Ms. Gia a much bigger office, because she's going to have a lot of positions to fill. Find out how many people have marked undecided on their forms for next year. They're looking for better jobs elsewhere. Find out how many people have already said they aren't coming back for next year. Is that what we want Lynchburg to become? The first step in someone's career in education? No, we want Lynchburg to be the final step for great educators. We want Lynchburg to be the goal to which others aspire. And make no mistake, we can get there. We've got hard-working educators with great minds and good ideas all across the division, from the bottom to the top. We've got a community that wants to see us succeed and is willing to work with us to help us achieve our goals. We've got a school board made up of dedicated leaders of that community who proved, when they reinstated pay schedules last year, that they are willing to take action. The time to act is now. So what do we do? How do we get there? Where will the solutions come from? The solutions are already out there, created by staff members, administrators, and faculty. Solutions like these: combining existing alternative education programs with community-based programs to provide better locations and services; combining as many secondary alternative education programs into one place as possible; and creating a space within that program for students who receive suspensions between one and 10 days, so that they can maintain their academics while working on behavioral issues; alternative education programs that include not only academics but therapeutic education, research-based social skills training, exercise programs, and community service. There are plans within the division that could give us an alternative education program that includes a homebound online approach, perhaps tying in with a tech ed or a work-study component, allowing students to work at their own pace in their own home when it fits into their schedules. We have ideas to expand the offerings at the Empowerment Academy, providing needed tutoring to students and even a road to the GED to help them get ahead. There are options like a school within a school, where students are placed on alternative schedule but housed within their base schools. There are many others as well. There are a variety of very well-thought-out plans created by your employees. They take into account things like student needs, cost to the division, building availability, and overall effectiveness. But you need to be very clear on a few things. The first is that you have a need at all levels. From pre-K through 12th grade, we have students with serious issues regarding discipline. This is not a high school problem. This is a division-wide problem, from the youngest to the oldest. The second thing you need to be clear on is the time to act is now. This isn't a "let's see what we can do for next year" issue. You had a fight in one of your schools that needed police intervention on Friday. You had a fight in another one of your schools before classes even started on Monday. These problems are not going to settle down over the next three months. They're only going to grow and grow exponentially if left unchecked. You need to take action now. There are plans out there. Choose one. Pilot it. Pilot two or three of them. Compare notes. See what worked and what didn't. We've got schools for innovation. Use them. That's what they're here for, to pilot programs, technology, and ideas. Teddy Roosevelt said, "In any moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing." The time to act is now. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment part of the board meeting. The next is the finance report. Ms. Lakonic?
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're going to present the transactions for the month of January 2020. The operating budget you'll see has gone up, and that is due to the fund balance return from the city, so you'll see that as an increase to your budget. The revenues received to date, we received 50.53%, and the expenditures to date is 50.07%. In addition, we have also a more detailed summary of our health insurance transaction for the month of January to show that our ending balance is $943,023.99, and that is in addition to the reserve that we have at the city. We have provided three attachments. It's your two standard, it's your revenue report and your expenditure report, and if you have any questions on those, we'll be happy to try to answer those tonight. And the third attachment is just an update of those fund balance returns, the things that made the budget go up, just the status of where we are on those items. So that will be your third attachment.
Any questions? Any questions, Dr. Nellis?
Well, the fund balance is just the line item and the original balance summary down there at the bottom on the second page.
On the second page of...
The revenue report.
It is actually throughout the different areas in which it was allocated to, so you will see it will be within the major categories in which it was assigned. Those are CIP, so this is only the things that the city returned back to us to be in our operating budget.
Okay. Dr. Gupta?
Just a clarification for public. The next year's budget will be presenting to the Finance Committee on January 10th. Oh, sorry, March 10th. And then there'll be a public forum on March 17th. Offline, I asked you about the direct payment. Could you explain that $105,000, where is that coming from? Just clarifying.
The direct payment on the health insurance. Okay, so we have our normal payroll, the employee makes their contribution, and the employer has their contribution. We also have the direct payments for our retirees. VRF sends us a check monthly. We also have employees that may be out on unpaid leave or they're on COBRA, and they will actually send in a check. And then we have school nutrition, who is a separate fund, they have their own account. So they are still going into our account through their payroll. They have to issue us a check. So those are actually direct deposits into our account.
Any additional questions, Dr. Nellis?
I'd just like to thank you again for the additional information that you've given us on the health insurance side. It's evolved over time, and it really is very helpful and informative. And just want to point out to those who can see it, that the total deductions for this, for the month of January were $628,000, which is much better than what we've seen in the past, but also reflects this fluctuation that we all see compared to January was $1.2 million. So it just fluctuates a lot, which we are not in control of. But with information you've given us before, it looks like we're sort of on the average per month for how we did about two years ago, which was a reasonable year, which is also reassuring. So thank you very much for...
Very much.
...your help with that. The information is really good. And is this the time to comment about the fund balance return statement that we received too? Is that one of the attachments?
That's one of the attachments, yes.
I just, strictly for point of information, and I know we've been told this before, but on this is listed the Sonatrol upgrade to digital controls and the Siemens Design Control upgrade, which is about $120,000. Could someone remind me what those are, those two items?
We'll ask Mr. Gasky to come to the podium and talk about that.
Okay. Sure, it's the Sonatrol upgrade for digital controls and then the Siemens Design Control upgrade.
Well, first of all, the Sonatrol, as technology changes and everything, everything's going digital, and our current security, Sonatrol security is analog and in many instances no longer being supported by the manufacturer of the equipment. So that was, we were pretty much had to do it.
That's a security program.
That's the security, that's our intrusion alarms and card access at the doors, all of that sort of thing. On the Siemens side, same thing, technology. As you may be aware, Microsoft is no longer supporting...
Windows 7.
Windows 7, and that platform that we currently have with Siemens, and that's our building controls at three buildings, Dunbar, Bass, and Sandusky Middle. So that's our heating and air conditioning controls, also the lights at Sandusky. No longer being supported because Windows 7's out, and so we took this opportunity to go ahead and try to get that upgraded so that we don't run into a problem a year from now.
Right. Well, that's great. That makes a lot of sense, and I just really wanted that for clarification. So thank you for doing that. That's a big help.
Dr. Nellis, did you have a question? Any additional questions? Thank you. That moves us to the consent part of our agenda. It includes the school board meeting minutes, February work session minutes, January 38th, student discipline committee meetings, February 11th and 13th. Includes the amended personnel report. It also includes the religious exemption and the amended Lynchburg City School Board operation policies and regulations. Dr. Nellis?
I had a question on the February 13th student discipline committee meeting minutes. I didn't know if it was just upholding the...
Yes.
...end day suspension.
And yes.
Just want to make sure that was right.
Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Dr. Gupta?
Second.
Dr. Coleman? Do you want to make your announcements? We'll go ahead and vote. Okay. Are you going to vote on the board doc? Great. There you go.
Ooh, very nice.
Ooh, there it is. It was down at the bottom. Dr. Coleman, do you vote yes?
I do intend to vote yes.
It's a big, it didn't pop up on yet.
Oh, that's interesting.
Do you have to be on the consent agenda, that tab, to get it to come up?
We're going through the whole thing, yeah, okay. Y'all proceed.
Okay. Are you voting yes?
Voting yes.
Clear. We voted yes. All right.[602.29][602.29](LAUGHING). Dr. Edwards, do you have an announcement for us?
I do. The motion carried?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I do have an announcement. We had a position open at Perrymont Elementary School for an assistant principal, and with that vote, I am pleased to announce that the new assistant principal at Perrymont will be Ms. Rosa Derakott. Ms. Derakott is currently our behavioral coach at Perrymont, who's done a wonderful job of working with our students and working with our families and doing some of those things and strategies that Mr. Luce talked about, relationships, relationships, and helping our kids. So we're excited to have Ms. Derakott join our administrative team as the new assistant principal for Perrymont Elementary.
Wonderful.
Now, we get to another fun part, the student representative comments. We don't have a rep from Heritage tonight, but Christopher's here for EC Glass. What's going on at Glass?
Well, there's a few.
We don't really have to slide up and down because it's all work by hand.
There we go. Okay, cool. So, it's been... Oh, cool. I was wondering. There we go. Okay.
Nothing came up on that screen.
All right. So there's a lot going on. EC Glass's basketball season is kind of coming to the end. The boys, they lost against Halifax County. It was a really close game, 61-62. The girls, actually, they're still going. I believe they're traveling up to like the Nova area this weekend to keep continuing their journey in basketball. But as you guys can see, our student section is pretty lively. People are really good at the game, and our girls have still been doing great, and the guys ended their season really strong. So already, we're moving on to spring sports, which is kind of crazy to me because I feel like yesterday I was just talking about us starting fall sports. But all those, the tryouts are kind of coming to an end now. I think like we have outdoor tracks still left to finish that stuff up, but we're kind of moving things along there, and so there's going to be a lot of sporting events to come check out over the next few months. And also, EC Glass went on to the state meet February 22nd. We did really good there, especially our girls. They placed seventh overall, and actually their medley relay placed fourth overall, and it got a new record school time. So that was pretty cool.
Very cool.
We also did really well in the forensics tournament, which was held at Glass on February 29th at noon. And they, a lot of people, I have their names on the next slide, will be going to Midlothian, Virginia, March 28th to compete in states. And so just a quick shout out to all the people that are moving on to states. It's a lot of really good actors, and I'm really excited to see what they do at that We also had our indoor percussion at Winter Guard, and they won their classes all the way down in Brawley, North Carolina, so that's pretty far away, but February 29th, so believable is that. The last weekend, I think, days are just kind of flying by at this point. They went down to Panther Creek High School, and they competed there, and they did really well, so those are just celebration pictures from that. We also had our science fair at EC Glass. I believe that switches the school that it's at every other year. Ms. Gray and Ms. Edwards worked really hard to put that on, and they give all their dual enrollment students a really awesome opportunity to show off the research they're doing. Last year, when I was taking Ms. Gray's AP Biology class, we actually had a day where we talked about some of the projects, and it's really cool to see some of the ideas people have and how they kind of formulate them and put them on a poster. So we had 27 students between the EC Glass and Heritage competing at Glass for the science fair. We also did really well at Skills USA, and I believe the, there's another part of that competition that will be, we'll find out in the next few weeks, and so I'll update you guys on that. But our crime scene investigations team, which is Eli Friend, Hannah Rasso, and Chase Bryant, all placed first, and they're going to be moving on to states in April. So those are some pictures of them. The bottom was, I believe, them actually working, trying to solve the crime here. And we also did really good in machinery. Joe Seville took first place, and he's also going to be moving on to states, and that was the, a picture of the three people from Glass competing. We also did really well at teams. EC Glass managed to tie itself for first, I believe. So we had two EC Glass teams taking first place, and that was February 27th. And as you guys can see, we actually had to censor out the project they were working on there. Apparently, we aren't allowed to have that in a picture, but whatever it was, it must have been pretty cool.[921.31][921.31](LAUGHING). And I had some friends actually competing on the team, and they had a lot of fun. Also, Lady Hilltoppers, they're helping out Daily Bread. Those are some pictures of them. So our sports teams always stay busy, even when they're not playing sports, helping out the community, so that's always really cool to see. Our senior awards ceremony, that's going to be May 18th. If you guys want to put that on your calendar, and you can see some of the awesome awards our seniors are going to be getting. And that is going to be at the EC Glass auditorium. And our prom is going to be at the Academy again this year. The tickets are still $35. It's going to be March 28th, so it's kind of coming up. And finally, we have our NHS induction ceremony, which will be next week, which, next Monday, unfortunately. I'm the president, yet somehow I managed to set up my schedule so that I can't even attend the induction ceremony. But we're really excited to have Dr. Edwards come and talk. And yeah, if you guys are available, we would love to have you come out, and that's all I got.
Lots of things going on. Thank you, Christopher.[1001.00][1001.00](APPLAUSE). Ben and I have a little Heritage meeting. Okay, we have some news from Heritage?
We do, even though Ian isn't here, but we'd love to share some news from the past up. Share just a little news from Heritage.
So, last two days, the 3A, 4A track meets, indoor track meets have been going on over the local university, and happy to announce that the girls' team won indoor state champion.
Wonderful.[1031.48][1031.48](APPLAUSE).
That's a repeat from the outdoor state champion last spring, so they're going to continue to have a good year. Don't know how many individual first places there might have been on the girls' team. The boys' Heritage High School indoor track team finished second or third. We don't know which one at this point, and their 4-200 team did win the state championship as the fastest team. So I know there's some things Ian would mention if he was here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
All right. School board committee reports. Dr. Gupta?
The Finance Committee did not meet last time because there was no agenda item. We'll be meeting on March 10th, and we'll look at the...
All right, is there a report from Governor's School?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Laurel?
The Laurel School Board, we met, and we were finalizing the budget, and the budget had to be done a little differently because of the way the funding sources were going this year, but they are doing a great job, and we'll have that finished very soon.
Okay. STEM Academy?
I was able to go to the STEM Academy, thanks to Dr. Brennan, and I just want to report that I am now winner, I mean, a champion of the STEM program. They're doing a great job, and if you want to do a school that's, stay close.
Stay close, go far.
Your own, this is... And just some history, because that's what we did there, that they started with $5,000, and unlike the Governor's School, they are not considered a gifted program as such yet, so they don't receive any dollars for funding. They create their own, or they have from the school system the slots that are available, and they have at least 25, and they're looking for five more enlarged slots. And right now, the city of Lynchburg has seven, and we are one of them. We don't have as many. Campbell County has over 25 slots. But this is a great program. The other thing is, they have five classes. They're all taught by faculty members, college faculty. There are 101 people have graduated since 2015. Fifty-four, 54% of their students stay local, and they're actually working and do internships in the programs that sponsor them. And if a student is there and they're looking for, like say, they're looking for now something with engineering design or programming and design, robotics and assembly, they'll go out and try to find a company that will help and sponsor the student and give them a placement to do an internship. Internships serve two purposes. One is, it'll let you know whether or not that's a place you want to go or what you want to do. You'll quickly know, and/or it will confirm that that's what you want to do, and then you can get your foot in the door. You already have your network of contacts, and you already know what to do when you get there. The other thing is that it's a half-day program, and there's so many different options. When you go, you're not just, just one way. You can just, there's so many routes that you can take and so many exits you can take. But the best story, I think, that came away from there, that I came away with, is there's a company, AMTI, and they had a student that did an internship there, and they hired him, and he was able, he stayed there so long that he was able to take advantage of the tuition assistance program. So he's going to work there, go to school online, and he'll get part of his tuition paid for.
Right.
Can't beat that.
No.
That's the smartest thing. So just wanted to say, and the organizer is Susan.
Cash.
Cheering.
Susan Cash.
And you don't have to worry about missing anything. She keeps you very well up to date and gives you every pass and everything you need. So she is really efficient, and even sends thank you notes. But just wanted to say.
Thank you, Sharon. Legislative advocacy?
So I have a report, but first I'd like to thank Ms. Carter for attending that STEM Joint Academy meeting in my absence. You obviously came back with a lot of enthusiasm and information, but thanks so much, Sharon, for doing that. So I've already apologized to Susan that this is a little bit of a report because we had a busy meeting, so I don't know if we want to put on the timer for three minutes and cut me off, but I will give a shot at covering some things. So we met last week. We had Dr. Coleman, Dr. Nellis, Ms. Morrison, and Dr. Edwards as part of the committee, and we had a phone conference with J.T. Kessler from VSBA, who was on the scene in Richmond and was giving us an update as to what was going on currently related to VSBA items. And his points were several. One is that there was a remarkably large number of pieces of legislature related to education that were submitted. There were 349 different pieces, which is much higher than they usually have to handle, which was a lot to cover and to address. He reviewed a few of those, none of which had been passed, obviously, at this point, but things he included were mandatory collective bargaining bill, minimum wage increase bill, and the status of the budget. The budget apparently is going to be voted on, I think, today, but I haven't seen anything regarding that, so, but he thought that was going to be passed soon. And his feeling was that the budget probably would go through and would not be postponed because the legislature wanted to have that settled, so we will see. Unfortunately, his main message to us was that the key word for this legislative session is mandates, unfunded mandates. I'm not sure he used that term or not, but he definitely said mandates for the number of new legislative pieces that were being passed and going to be expected that we address. So that was his main comment, and asked us to keep being involved in the emails that he sends as far as legislative updates go. Does any of you want to comment on anything else as far as that part of it goes?
Excellent job.
Okay. So under legislative advocacy, we also talked about setting a new date for our breakfast with legislators, which will be November 13th, so please mark your calendar for that. That's similar to what we did last year, where we invited people to come. Probably will be at EC Glass because we've had a little trouble establishing...
We booked the room.
Booked the rooms. We're all set with the same room. And then the, our goal between now and the end of May is to come up with our new legislative agenda so that that can be part of both City Council's proposal for the summer and VSBA. So that's our goal, is to bring that back to you by the end of May. Under community relations, we also commented on several conversations. One is that Ms. Morrison brought up the idea of having listening tours, which apparently had been done in the past, where the school board would go out into communities at different schools and would have more of a dialogue with the community on different topics. And Dr. Edwards actually mentioned that there was a discussion, perhaps doing one of those regarding the new budget for this, have it this spring and then maybe something in the fall. Somebody set the timer.
Time's up.
Time's up. Exactly right. Exactly right. Okay, I'm close. The other item that I wanted to just make people aware of and ask for some input after the meeting, perhaps by email, is that there, underneath community relations, we all know there are a number of important partners that we have. The Education Foundation that we saw tonight is one of them. The Partners in Education is another, and then Beacon of Hope are all nonprofits that are very closely tied into the schools and the success of our students. We were trying to figure out some way that perhaps the board could be more involved with those organizations to help them and to have a line of communication. Currently, Partners in Education has Mr. Harvey and Ms. Morrison on that in some ways, that has already occurred this year, which I think has been very helpful. The, we, Dr. Edwards actually reached out to the Education Foundation regarding how could we meet with them, perhaps have one or two board members meet with their organization. They suggested perhaps a biannual meeting that would occur with maybe two board members and two or three Education Foundation members to just have a morning meeting or afternoon where it was convenient to discuss items twice a year. And then the Beacon of Hope invited us to come to their board meetings or individuals who were interested. Their next board meeting is going to be March 5th at 5:30. If you're interested in being, in volunteering to work with either the Beacon of Hope or with Partners in Education, if you would let me know, and I would be happy to pass your names on to that. I'm assuming that Partners in Education is covered with Mr. Harvey and Ms. Morrison, but if you're interested in these other ones, please let me know. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
This is Natalie. General of discussion, possibly a later point, that student, the school board discipline committee, and I know their parameters and their dynamics to that, but it seems like we hear a lot about discipline, and each group meets and follow through and all of that. I'd like us at some point to have some discussion about the discipline committee.
Okay.
Here, you're right. If I have any questions for Beacon of Hope, do channel it to you.
If you're interested in that, anyone by email could just let me know.
Because I can share privately with public.
Great. Thank you.
That takes to Basri Committees to the school board. Dr. Edwards?
Yes. Career Tech did not meet, but Equity Task Force did meet, and I'll ask Ms. Reeves to come up and give a quick summary of the February 26th meeting. Ms. Reeves?
Good evening, everyone. The Equity Task Force met on Wednesday, February 26th at 5:30 p.m. here in the school administration building. Information was shared about tonight's board meeting and the work session on March 17th. Updates were given to them on the volunteer policy. That included looking at the voluntary review flow chart that was created, as well as an update on the nondiscrimination policy. Members of the task force asked what the Equity Task Force could do to assist in raising achievement and closing the gap. To this end, the task force members agreed that it is best to work in subcommittees to address disproportionality in data, mentoring, and diversity and inclusion, so three subcommittees. Each subcommittee will meet and be ready to present at the March 25th meeting. Any questions?
Dr. Coleman?
Ethel, thank you for your great work in the Equity Task Force meeting, and we've been hearing a lot about the Equity Task Force and the great work you all are doing. But in terms of how your group is structured and the realization that you don't have to identify with a group, to speak up for a group, do you feel like you are in a position to adequately address all of these subgroups and considerations that are before us at this time?
As with anyone doing equity work, it is important to come in with a skill set that will allow you to have an open mind, as well as use resources that are available. There is no end to equity work, and I think many times people will come to the table with their passion and lacking understanding about others and their needs. We are working as the Equity Task Force to have those discussions, to talk about what it requires in order to make a change and to include what school board policy change looks like. So it is a slow process. I too am hearing the comments, the same comments you're hearing, but I believe that we have passionate people at the table who, if they continue to grow and embrace the work of equity, will be able to make the changes that we need to make.
If I could add to that, too, the way that the Equity Task Force meetings are run, we have 20 members, 20 voting members, but the... we have 20 members, 20 voting members, but the meetings aren't closed. So in addition to the 20 members who come, we often have guests who come and participate. Some come regularly that I forget that they're not a voting member. So it is open to the community to come and listen and participate as well, so.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Dr. Gupta?
I've been hearing quite a bit in public comments about L G B T Q task force. Maybe sometime in future, maybe you can hear the viability, should we have a separate task force for that subgroup or not, or should it be part of the Equity Task Force? L G B T Q.
It is part of the Equity Task Force.
Today, too, there was a comment about they'd like to have a separate task force. So what will be, you know, could it be discussed in your task force, Equity Task Force, and then maybe a report could be given to the board?
I'm happy to have the discussion, the task force. I think if I'm in order to say this, when you begin to branch off, you will open the can for, and I don't, can, opportunity, however you want to look at it, and inequities if we don't have task force for every group. I think that, again, if you're going to do equity work, then you have to have people who are able to have the conversations around equity work and to be inclusive versus creating more of the opportunities for inequities. That's Ethel's opinion. It is not the opinion of the Equity Task Force. However, because I do the work and because I'm working with others who do the work, I felt like I needed to share that.
And there are some, I know that the Commonwealth is forming some diversity and inclusion, and there's some listening tours going on across the state that is focusing on the work of equity and inclusivity as well. So, and I can share with the board a list of dates of when those tours are going, going to be as well. So, lots of good work happening.
Dr. Sanah?
We get the schedule of the, of the meetings, but where are they publicize the Equity Task Force meetings so that interested people could attend and?
On our website.
Is it? It's on the, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Health Advisory did not meet in Bon Jovi, but Special Ed Advisory did meet. And Ms. Janine Daniels-Boscher will give us a quick summary of the February 18th meeting.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. The Special Advisory Committee met on February 18th at 6:00 P.M. at Sandusky Middle School. We had a discussion, there is an upcoming transition fair at C V C C on March 7th that will be for parents. That information is going out to the middle and high schools. The C I A C Committee, as part of this, letters were sent to the seven private schools that are within our jurisdiction that deal with federal set aside students. That's our students that are parent placed in private schools and students with disabilities that have special ed services through service plans. Those seven schools were invited to come and speak and give any information that they want to give for the annual plan that will come up here in the next month. None of the private schools were in attendance, but they can still send that information into us. To date, we have not received anything, but we hope to receive something in the next month. Dawn Decker was also there. She is our federal set aside person that sets up services. And she discussed what she and the team are doing and some of the things that they will be doing next year. The proposed annual plan will be brought to the C I A C Committee on March 24th. That meeting is at 6:00 P.M. at Lincoln Horn Middle School. And then we will bring it here to the board for review and then approve. And that was pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions? You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to comprehensive strategic plan.
Yes. And I'm going to invite that up. Share a little bit about?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to talk a little bit about E C Glass tonight. That was linking that's the strategic plan to our goal one, which is about student growth, development, and success. I shared with you an additional document tonight. There was, there's a handy dandy little form that's on the V D O E website that is a one-page fact sheet about the schools. So on that, it will give you some of the things that we've talked about, the breakdown of the percent of, of different subgroups that are representative within the building and a little bit of information about that. And it actually has the, the achievement levels and everything is, is on the, the one page. As we've done in the past, we looked at what the strategic, what the school improvement plan focused on and it looked at the scores that were fueling the work back in September of 2018. So that's the, the goals and things that they set that led to the scores that we currently have in place. At that time, they had an achievement gap of level two in English. That was with black students, economically disadvantaged students and disability subgroup. If you're looking on the, the fact sheet, when we look at our English achievement, currently, those areas are all in the green. So we had marked improvement in, in those subgroups and in the overall performance. Some of the strategies that they used with that, in, in looking at their plans, they're very targeted. They, they focused on a few areas that they identified as weaknesses and went after those areas with great diligence. They provided targeted training in Newsleer. That's a program that really focuses on reading, but it uses current events. So it's things that would be relevant to kids. So we're focusing on reading comprehension. They really identified inferencing as a problem, so they, they went after that in, in all of their areas. They provided strategies to teachers on how to incorporate the inferencing into the daily lessons. And they focused also effort on incorporating higher level questioning. One of the things that would be noted with that was that one of the subgroups with students with disabilities went from a 51.43 up to a 71.83 in testing in that area. The, the other area that, that still was in yellow under performance was in mathematics, and that was largely students with disabilities. In that area, that, that did not make that, they did have gains, but not quite enough to come out of the yellow. By my calculations, it was just a few tenths is what they would have needed to come out of the yellow. So they continue that work with that group of students. Some of the, the strategies that they're incorporating now, they're working with the reading diagnostic tool, and there's a math diagnostic tool as well, to track progress of students' growth. Students are, the teachers are using small groups and stations to increase the students' interactions with instruction, incorporating improved sub-performance, subgroup performance as part of the teacher's SMART goal. So teachers are setting goals that they want to improve that individually in each one of their classrooms. High-level questioning and, and still building those inferencing skills is something they're continuing to work on. They're not, not quite satisfied with where they are. They want to keep growing. And their administrators are making a real effort to utilize co-observations and going in in pairs and talking with teachers and helping them improve instruction in the building. One of the things that the other part that we've added is looking at our representation in our advanced courses. That's the last couple of pages with that. We have some areas that we're still working on, obviously, with this. One of the things I've worked with schools with, and E C Glass is no exception, is to take that on as one part of their school improvement plan. So they've added a category with that. So they're identifying those areas where they do have gaps and are doing strategies to work on that. Some of the things they're doing currently is they've got their teachers in the upper level courses that are going down to the classes that lead into them and recruiting and, and trying to encourage students to come into that. They're also tracking performance. One of the other strategies we've worked with that's, that plays into a couple of things they're working on, too, is really tracking cohorts of kids they're identifying that, that they want to either promote or push into doing a little more, or maybe we want to, if we're looking at things such as the chronic absenteeism or the dropout rate, which they're still not satisfied with. They're doing a lot of communication with parents, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. And they're also kind of set up an early warning system. So if students miss a certain number of days, they go on a watch list and they're meeting with kids periodically and parents with that and starting that earlier than when they did in the past. That was one thing they did with seniors, but they've dropped that back down or starting earlier on with that to see if they see a pattern to try to help kids stay in school and, and know the importance of coming every day to work with that. Those are some of the things that I've seen them working on currently. I'll entertain any questions.
Questions? Ms. Carter?
I'm just, just questioning this, how some, just how students are going to these classes. But what's the draw for the African-American students in the world, just world history and geo and physics and like English Lit and American, advanced American history versus some of the others that you would?
Really, I don't know. I mean, you know, oftentimes, I could just, it would just be conjecture on my part. You know, a lot of times it's, kids do gravitate towards courses they like and teachers that they really are interested in. Having been, you know, classroom teacher, that's what you hope for. You hope to make your class interesting and you can attract all kinds of folks in there. It also is noted, too, that some of the courses that are listed on here, because I listed everything, that have some very low representation. Some of the courses, like say maybe an A P art class, there may be only two children in that. That's something that's almost like an independent study. There's, there's several of those that are on there that are very low representation of students in general.
Dr. Brennan?
Thank you for providing the information. I think it's really helpful to see. But looking at the, the list of, of black students who are involved in A P courses and both C V C enrollment, dual enrollment, and early college enrollment, it really is pretty dramatic, the small percentage there. And I, I know that you've commented about teachers trying to go into classes and recruit. But I think we've talked about, or we've been told, actually, that really probably this has to do with going back earlier as far as into middle school and elementary school to try to help with that. Is there, is there an ongoing plan to try to help students to be ready for these courses and interested courses as they get into high school?
Yes, yes, definitely. We're certainly working with, with Paddle to be able to do that, to encourage kids to do, if, if they didn't sort of get on that track, to be ready to take the advanced courses to, to help them make up that difference so they are ready. We, we have that going on. We also have, in talking to several of the high schools, particularly at Dunbar, they're working with cohorts of kids now to identify the kids that they want to push. So that's kind of creating that culture where you have that relationship with students and that encouragement's there to, to make, you know, or to make going in those courses an attractive option and, and help teach kids the value of wanting to do that, which, you know, you have to, for anybody to want to take a course that is difficult, they need to see the value in it and what, what they hope to get out of it later on, you know, with it. So I think that's the, you know, where we're going with everything we're doing. I'm just a big proponent of tracking a group of kids and looking at, you know, identifying kids that we need to do something with and watching them over time and, and working and meeting with folks so that we don't take our eye off the mark and we don't take our eye off of kids and lose any.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
So where do you see, where do you see 100% of the students are white? That means the classes, everyone in their classes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harvey?
Is there a way that we could actually include the number of students? Because I, I think I'm, I'm sharing the concern where Sharon might be going with this. If we have a class, let's say, A P German, it's 100%, but you only have one stu-, it's 100% white, but you only have one student taking the entire class. That gives us some information. But if we have 25 students taking that class and 100% of them are white, then that, that gives us a different piece of information.
Sure. I certainly can, can provide that. In that particular class, there are three students.
Three students, okay.
Right.
We just have to be careful because when you get to the small numbers, it's one of the reasons why the state does a T S too small. Because then you start being able to identify students by saying, hey, there's a class, there's only two kids in there. Well, I know who they are in that particular class, which is one of the reasons why when you start disaggregating data and parsing it out smaller and smaller and smaller, we start to lose some of that protectiveness that we have for kids. So we just need to be careful. We're, we're providing you with this information more for context so that you can, you can see it. But we're just real cautious when it comes to any testing data that, and you can, you can jump in, that when the sample size is one or two kids, they become identifiable. And this is one or two kids in a school, so.
Right. And I appreciate that, but I guess what I'm, I'm struggling with is, as I look at the advanced courses, we're starting to see some improvement with the percentages there. But then when we go down to A P, it looks fairly one-sided. But I think if we had a better understanding of the number of students we're talking about, I mean, it's, I still would love to see 50/50 on everything, but it, it helps give us a better picture because, because the goal would be that we would start having some of these students who are in advanced classes start to be challenged to take A P classes. That's the goal.
Yeah. And I completely understand what you're saying and get it. And we've done this data where we've aggregated it to just say, A P courses. So you have a larger number, then that wasn't giving you the information about specificity of courses. So we're trying to meet all worlds, so to speak, trying to give you the information that will let you see, are there certain courses? But we're also trying to be mindful of our due diligence for not putting out public data where we're identifying one or two kids.
Could you, could you just say less than five?
Too small means under five, and then we have a better. At least we have some reference. We could put a T S there without putting, that would make me feel more. Well, because otherwise, yeah, we, we really don't know what you're looking at.
Ten.
Okay. Less than 10. Less than 10 would be, that would just be nice to know. Okay. That, that would make me feel better.
Because otherwise, we don't know what the base for calculation of percentage is. It's your classroom road size. You know what 100% is. So I agree, absolute numbers are important, but they could be. The other thing is, being a business professor, it breaks my heart, and advanced micro and macroeconomics. We have good business schools here, maybe schools where you can get some minority faculty, like V U L is building up their business programs now, to come and talk to these kids and saying, come take microeconomics and economics. And, you know, so that way, that could be a measure they can take later on. I don't know if that helps.
Right. I think so. I think any encouragement we can for kids to, to show them options and encourage to do great things is wonderful.
Dr. Nellis?
I just, I want to, I guess, reiterate that it'd be helpful to have numbers on these where it's appropriate, because 20%, you know, and you could have more black students taking a particular class, but percentage-wise, it might not change, depending on your mix of other students. So it's like, you know, really what you want to do is have more kids taking these, all these classes.
Right.
And whether you can group them by advanced sciences or, I mean, from my perspective, I'm, I'm okay. I'm not trying to, you know, make your, your guys' life harder, but I, I think the, from the context, to have the numbers so you know what the basis is.
I thought it was also interesting, Dr. Copeland, we asked about other and you gave, you said, what, there were 19 or 20 categories?
Over 20 different selections for.
Wow. For, so when we said 18% other, what does that mean? Lot of categories. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No disrespect, but this is a wonderful report. But we get these reports and the numbers are not changing. Dr. Nellis, I think I'm really where he is, where we really want to get more students in, period. But thank you, Dr. Gupta, for your comment. I, I don't know, Dr. Coleman, the professional development, I'm, again, picking back into my discipline dynamic, and I know that that's narrow-minded in my thinking, but, and I brought this up before, if you have a kid that's in one unit brought this up before, if you have a kid that's in one unit and they are creating a discipline problem or whatever the case may be, then you put them in an advanced class or an AP class and then all of a sudden they're doing that work and then no behavior problems. Whether it's the right people coming in to mentor them, to get them where they need to be, I don't see much change in these numbers without us taking a hard look at discipline and professional development.
Dr. Sinha?
Well, I agree with you. I think making it relevant to students is really important. I always go back to my story of, I remember in Algebra I in eighth grade, thinking, when am I ever going to need to use the equation of a line? Who does that? Turns out, I do it all the time now because it's statistics. But that, that wasn't made tangible to me at the time, so I didn't really care and I didn't apply myself. I didn't see a future in it. So if there could be some way in the, the classes that they step off to go into these to talk about, hey, have you ever thought of this? Or, you know, are you into even sports statistics? Well, here's a way you can, can do this and, you know, kind of make it more tangible so that they will think about economics. Because I, on the surface, I wouldn't think about taking economics, but when you think about how it's used and what it relates to and how much guides your life, you know. So, yeah, that would be really helpful. And one other thing, when you see change, what are you talking about? Because we're only seeing one point in time, so we're not seeing, or is it the results of the accreditation that you're referring to?
Uh, Dr. Gupta, I mean, not Dr. Gupta, Dr. Sinha, you're exactly right. I'm speaking over time and I stand by what I said and I hope at some point we'll be able to figure out what to do to move these numbers.
Ms. Carter, did you have?
Just what I was going, pretty much what Dr. Sinha was talking about, you have to make, the course has to be relevant, relevant to the child and has to, the child has to see that it's relevant to where they're going. But also I think another component is what Dr. Coleman said, it's about the professional development and not steering a child where you think they should go, but look at their aspirations, their desires and try to, if you have a gifted child, and gifted looks different on different children, but you have to see what are they doing? Do they look like they're entrepreneur? Let's try to move them toward the business side, to the positive place. Or if you see their, you know, because some children, it just depends on where they're coming from, they may not be able to steer it in the positive direction, but you can kind of, the teacher and the guidance counselor can kind of guide them there. But sometimes kids want to try a different thing, but the teachers will say, no, you're not ready for that. The counselor will say, no, you're not ready for that. And look at your grades, I don't think you can do that. So some of it is that too.
I'll come back.
I just was saying, I agree with everything everybody said, but I would like to point out that when you look at the pass rates for the two years, they are making progress and classes worked really hard and these numbers. I mean, the numbers in the classes, I think we need to still be working on, but I think we need to acknowledge the fact that there has been huge change here and that's not easy to do. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Bill, because somebody will help me to review this so I can appreciate that, what you're saying, because I know that's right. I have no challenge, whether or not our distinguished superintendent and administrative team are working on this. Over time, it seems to be an ongoing challenge. And thank you, School Board Member Carter, for taking that deep dive and overlooking certain entities that might be able to help us with this problem. So for example, Dr. Gupta brought up a suggestion, that there's some things I think we're going to have to take an additional look at to help us for all subgroups to push these numbers up in the various classes. This is EC Glass, we've got Heritage, and then we've got whatever we're doing at middle school level. Then we've got these elementary students who by the time they get to middle or high school, they've already replaced a book with a basketball or something else more destructive and never will get to enter these classes. We've got to take a hard look at this.
Any additional comments?
I was just going to say, middle school to me is the key here that we need to focus on.
Well, you can't get to AP German if you started in ninth grade. That's for sure. You've got to start it early. Thank you. All right, now we go to unfinished business, the art collection donation to Heritage High School. Thank you for waiting patiently again.
I'm going to provide the update. They're here to answer any questions you can have. As part of the agenda item, provided a copy of the bylaws that were developed by Mr. Rourke since the last board meeting. These bylaws mirror the foundation that currently exists at EC Glass. Additionally, last Thursday on the 27th, there was a meeting of what I'd call an advisory group of folks to start collecting names of individuals to invite to be on the board. And then there have been some initial drafts of what right now is a tentative art agreement to where Mr. Bassett is acknowledging everything that's in his collection and then transferring it to Lynchburg City Schools. After I make a few edits to it, then I'll pass it over to Ms. Towns so she can take a look at it and give us any insight that she might have. But I'd say we're several steps closer and it's the administration's recommendation that you allow us to continue to move forward and we graciously accept these donations.
Questions? Dr. Brennan?
I just want to, once again, want to thank Mr. Bassett for this amazing gift to the school and I'm certainly in favor of the Lynchburg City Schools accepting it. I just want to make sure that, Mr. Bassett, you're, the one concern I have is this legal piece, I think that Dr. Coleman just referred to, that this has been valued $150,000 and I want to make sure that from a viewpoint of that transmission of that value to Lynchburg City Schools.
I could care less. You call it whatever you want to call it. They asked me what it's worth and I said $100, $125,000. But, I mean, this is all contemporary local art. There's no Picasso's, there, you know, there's no big stuff here. It's just a bunch of stuff. A bunch is a kind of a art term. Maybe the more scientific term, the more scientific, you were talking about science, the scientific term might be lots. This is lots of art. And, you know, I'm passing it on. And after you vote, I'd like to let you have, I'd like you to let me have about three minutes, but I want to wait for you to vote first, unless you want, unless you demand otherwise.
We're good. Go ahead.
So Dr. Coleman, just help me one more, I mean, Dr. Copeland, just help me one more time with what is being developed from a viewpoint of a contract?
So here's some of the language that's in it. It talks about the 200 pieces of art, identifies that at times the collection may be at a, at human service organizations around the city or at Heritage High School. At specific language, Larry Bassett will donate to Lynchburg City Schools and specifically to Heritage High School. The totality of the collection, the school may elect to decline any pieces in the collection that they determine not to be suitable for any reason of their determination. Any declined pieces would be returned to Mr. Bassett. The school will maintain a selection of artwork at the human service organizations as long as both organizations are in agreement that they want to do that. Heritage High School will curate and rotate the art. There's no formal agreement between Heritage High School's Art Foundation and these organizations. It is just a, these are the organizations that are partnering with us. So it is a, from my perspective, it is being developed as a transference of the pieces of art to the control of Lynchburg City Schools and the official name is the Friends of Heritage High School Art Collection. And then the bylaws contain how members will be selected to be on that, what their terms of office are, what the officers are, what the executive committee is. It contains all of those things, so.
Okay. Bob?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the art collection to Lynchburg City Schools. Understand that there's going to be some additional paperwork that officially makes that transfer acceptable to Lynchburg Schools and to Mr. Bassett.
We've had a lot of seconds.
That's a good sign.
Any further discussion?
I guess I have a question with Ms. Towns. What's our, I mean, the agreement's not been finalized yet. I mean, first of all, I'm in favor of the collection, so I just, I'm a little leery about jumping when there's a, things aren't wrapped up neatly.
Well, as far as accepting, it sounds like we're trying to make sure that the requests of Mr. Bassett are respected, my understanding that he wants to have some of this art used in buildings and such, and I think maybe just a bit more formalization of the process of how that would look long-term. But I believe that you all can accept the gift and then go further into how that gift will be used at a later date and then have that, have that formalized later by Mr. Copeland and I'll review that when he finishes up that, you did the contract.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded. Any more discussion? Are we voting online?
Oh, wow.
Where is it?
Can we do it verbal also, just to back that up?
Oh, I found it, yes.
He's still working on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. My name is Larry Bassett. River View's Art Space has been my residence for 16 years. River View's Art Space used to be an abandoned building on Jefferson Street. It was in a row of abandoned buildings and River View's Art Space was actually, as maybe you all know, the first downtown loft development. So when I moved into River View's Art Space, it was us and Amazement Square and NB Handy and lots of abandoned buildings down on Jefferson Street. And as you know, it's now a nice little downtown neighborhood along with all the rest of downtown. I want to thank you for joining the growing palette of people who are trying to put more art in the Lynchburg City School System. Couple, I had always thought, as I lived at River View's, it's a seven-story building, it's got four stories of residences and three stories of commercial, lots of walls. So I had always imagined that my art collection would end up at River View's because, you know, it's kind of my place. So, you know, a couple of years ago, River View's, the arts organization, and River View's Art Space, the condominium association, said, no, thank you. We don't want your art collection. They had their reasons and I was staggered, but you all know that, you know, sometimes it really happens that one door closes and another door opens. And I'm an organizer, so all of you have probably tried to get things done and you know what to do. You go around looking for somebody who is just as excited as you are about whatever it is you're trying to get done and is willing to work on it. So I went around town and I talked with a lot of people and a lot of people were, but I went to Heidi James, who you may know is the person who handles the art at EC Glass. And Heidi said, you ought to talk to John Rourke. So I went to meet John Rourke. Is John here? Look, John. So John, he's the guy. He's the guy who, I meet him and I talk about this and he is just as excited about it as I am. And I say, holy shit, can I say that? I say, I say, wow, this is, this is, this is incredible. And so, you know, we didn't like bond immediately, but, you know, it was like, this is what you want to have happen. So John was psyched about this. He was not only psyched about putting art at Heritage, but he was psyched about the fact that there was art out in the human service organizations. And he said, I've always hoped that I could do something like that and here I am about to retire and here you come and knock on my door and, you know, it's kind of serendipity. So, so, yeah, so John and I are going to do this. And I appreciate that you are willing to take the step, because I know the higher up you get in organization, the more people want to get kind of worried about the technicalities. Well, I've done this whole thing on kind of a handshake. You know, I'm not going to mess with you, you know, I'm not going to take my art away. I am in the process right now of trying to work out with my family, like, so are there things here that you want? You know, I got a lot of art, but, you know, I don't want to give away something that my grandchildren or nieces have always desired. So, yeah, a few things are going to disappear and I'm trying to have that happen in a kind of a reasonable way. But, you know, I think we, those are the kind of details that I'm assuming we can kind of work out, because probably nobody's going to say, Mr. Bassett, we only got 185 here, so what are you going to do about that? So, you know, we're going to work all this out. So if people are worried about the details, I'm here to work with you, because my goal has always been to get art out where people will see it. And John has some incredible ideas about getting art out into some of the other schools and I'm just delighted that you're all willing unanimously, apparently, to say, okay, we'll take this thing free. Of course, the last sentence is, it's at no cost. Well, you know, you're not, I'm not going to get any money, so I don't know what, I don't know what, you know, you all are going to do. I suppose there'll be some hidden costs somewhere or some down the line, but, you know, the stuff is free. You got it. And, you know, you'll have to put some nails in the walls and put it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Want to take a picture?
I'm sorry.
We'll all look forward to going out and seeing it. That now takes us to Lynchburg City School Board Instruction and Program Policies and Regulations.
Okay. These are up for a second read from I and P. There are also some notes in executive content too. You should be able, if you scroll down.
That was helpful, Bill. Thank you.
Do that as well.
I think maybe that's an easy way to do this, is to give a little idea of what, you know, if there's anything different so that when we come in. I did get some questions sent to me and was able to respond back and answer the questions. So hopefully we're in shape to move along with it.
Excellent, Bill.
Are there any questions, additional questions?
Pretty straight.
This is up for approval tonight. Someone want to make the motion?
So move.
Dr. Gupta made the motion. Ms. Carter? Dr. Coleman? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh. This is just a comedy.
Anchor record right there.
It pops up right on your side.
His is not popping up.
It's all right, we're good. I'm the one for tonight and I'm not working.
We're going to have to have another tutorial.
Does not everybody's come up?
I voted yes.
Okay. Everybody else voted? All right, the next, it was the part that, unfinished business that we added, it was KBR. That is, all requ-, it reads, all requests for information relating to the school division from news media should be referred to the Public Information Officer. And the language in that is not the language, Cindy Bab is the Communication Coordinator and the correct title for the office is the Department of Communication. So we wanted to make that reg have the correct language. And I think we did it.
So I defer to the board telling me what language I'd like to use, the options I think you listed. You'd either list the Coordinator of Communication, which is job title specific to the person, you could just make it a Public Information Office, or you could say Department of Communications.
What was the second one?
Public Information Office.
Office, take off the R.
Yeah. I like that. Then it could be anybody in there.
The Public Information Office was the one that.
Correct.
One that could.
One that could.
It's, it was in the consent part of the agenda. We moved it out of the consent part of the agenda. It read, "All requests for information relating to the school division from the news media should be referred to the Public Information Officer, but we don't have a Public Information Officer." We have a Communications Coordinator. But if we made it Public Information Office, then it would be that person who was in that office.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Mr. Harvey?
I'd just caution us about saying "office" because if we, if we do that, we open it up to anybody who might be in that office. So let's say there is a secretary in that office. Could that person then, if a call came in, be given the authority to release a public statement from LCS without necessarily? Cindy? That's, that's why I would be, I would feel more comfortable with, with leaving it at the discretion of the, the officer. Not, not saying the office, but keeping it specific to the person.
Then we'd have to change it to Communications Coordinator.
I think that's what we should do. Be my recommendation.
And I, I agree with Mr. Harvey. And also, the conversation came up last time is it refers to a Public Information Officer, which we don't have. I don't think we really have a Public Information Office either. What we do have is we have a Communication Coordinator, which I think is the person who now handles this.
Right.
So I think if we refer, if we want to be correct, I think we want to refer to Communication Coordinator, which is a position in Lynchburg City Schools that handles this.
I would, I would agree with that.
Dr. Mills, did you have?
So, yeah, I'm going to do my usual nitpicking here. So Public Information Officer is lowercase. So I think it's descriptive, not, you know. What we're talking about is Communications Coordinator, which is the title. So it's like, my standpoint, either one works. And with regards to if we wanted to just have the Public Information Office, if the secretary's giving out press releases, it sounds like it's time for a new secretary.
That's not how we work.
That's a problem easily solved. That's my, my feedback.
All right, so we have two recommendations. One is, "All requests for public, for information relating to school division from the news media should be referred to the Communication Coordinator or to the Public Information Office."
Yeah.
So I'm just going to ask you, Bill, which one do you prefer?
What were the choices?
Public Information Office or Communication?
Office.
Office?
The Communication Coordinator, I think was the option, right? Communication Coordinator versus Public Information Office. I like to do the Communication Coordinator since that's the person we have in the position.
Office.
James?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we're not voting yet.
I'm just, I'm just taking a straw. Oh, yes, you can ask a question.
This may be off the point, but it may mean that then. But when Trinay tweeted was his, she was the Public Information Director with her title.
She's Public Information.
Giving you a lifesaver. Giving you a lifesaver.
We used to have a Public Information Officer.
Thank you.
But we don't now.
So just pick what you'd like.
I, I have some thoughts on the intensity and further development of that whole office. But at any rate, I guess with the Communication.
Joel?
You know, if the Communication Coordinator is not there, then who do you go to at that point in time? So office, secretaries are as competent as anybody else. I would not like to belittle them. So I would go with the office. It provides much broader access.
Gary?
Coordinator.
Kim?
Life for death. Life for death.
Is it still called the Public Information Office? Is that what we have in our directory, like phone directory or website?
Department of Communications.
Department of Communications. Then why don't we say Department of Communications, since that's what it is? If you want, if you want clarity. So you want Department of Communication?
I'll change.
Because that's what exists.
There you go.
What we have, right?
There you go. Works for me.
I'll go for the Department, too.
That's fine.
That was one of the three options I read out.
That was one of the three options. All right, Mike?
You said to get to it. Yeah, no, it works for me, yeah.
And I go with Department of Communication.
Great.
Six.
Okay.
So it's Department of Communication.
Great.
Is some, will someone make a motion?
Move that we make that change to the policy?
"All requests for information relating to the school division from the news media should be referred to the Department of Communications."
Ms. Morrison, it's in there three separate times. Public Information Officer, so you do a global change across the whole policy.
Right, okay.
Thank you. All right, so we.
A second.
It's been second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Do we vote on it?
Get to vote. You have to vote to amend, and then you have to vote to approve.
And then vote on the policy.
I don't think I'm going to authenticate.
We, we need to amend the motion.
All right, wait just a minute.
Because what's here is the superintendent recommends the school board approve the policies as written. We need to amend. First thing we need to do is amend it to change Public Information Officer to Department of Communications.
So would you make that motion?
I will move to amend the motion to substitute Department of Communications for Public Information Officer.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
So we've had a motion and a second to change to Department of Comma, Department of Communication. So now are we ready to vote on that one? Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Wait, wait a minute. But it was as written, so as written is amended now.
As amended.
We approve, approve as amended.
Amended.
Yes.
Do you want us to vote now?
There should be two votes. One vote you just took to amend it, and now you're going to vote on the amended policy.
Which is adding the Department of Communication.
Well.
We're going to have to clean it up so it matches.
I would write it down on paper.
I know you're asking as written.
Be my suggestion.
There's two manual.
All right, so you know what we're voting on?
Could you please read the motion?
The motion is that all requests for information relating to the school division from the news media should be referred to the Department of Communication. And it's been made in second.
You're going fast.
But the motion is to approve it.
That's the most, that's the amended motion.
That's the amended motion.
We haven't voted on the amended motion.
Policy as amended.
But it's been, we had a motion and a second. We haven't voted on it. So are we ready to vote now? This has just gotten real confusing.
So you're voting on the policy as amended?
As amended.
Let's just, let's just have a clean, I move that we vote, that I move to approve the policy as amended.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? It's confused it anymore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, that takes us to new business. But it's also 7:30, so can we take like a 10-minute break?
Yes, please.
Fine with me, Madam Chair.
So we're, we're, we will re-leave 7:40. We are now ready to enter the new business part of our meeting. The first deals with Lynchburg City School Board Instruction Program Policies and Regulations.
All right, Dr. Coleman.
Good evening again. We have the next round of policies that we were working on. With these, they're, they are largely VSBA policies that, that the Policy Committee reviewed and would be basically straight replacement, replacing some older regs that we have. The committee felt like the VSBA policies met our needs. We did do, I'll tweak on, the one that deals with advanced and alternate, alternate courses for credit. And we struck IB and Cambridge courses because those are not offered here in Lynchburg City. But the, the rest of the policy was just fine. That was LE, that was LEB. Then the, the one that dealt with, it was IG E, which is Adult Education. There was one line in that that talked about that the board would establish the fees. We, the adult basic education provider who we contract with determines the fees. So it would make more sense for the policy to read that they would determine the fees. That way, we wouldn't have to update the policy every time the fee structure changed, just like we've done in the past with those. And I think of those, all of the rest of them are, are just VSBA policies to, to be adopted. We do have one that I passed out as a paper copy. It was Remediation Recovery Program. That one, we had reviewed the policy and finished with the committee. And within a couple of days, the VSBA sent out a new updated version of it. So you have before you the new updated version of that. They've removed the language that relates to defining retesting for SOL. So it's the, the things for the remediation recovery program. Basically, any school is going to be following the regs established by the Department of, of Education related to that. So that's, that's what we implement, so what we have to implement. So they've removed that, I think along the same lines of not wanting to spell it out because then they just because then they just say you were basically following their protocol.
I was going to say, I felt like we tried to keep things very general. So we weren't stuck having to do certain programs. So a lot of it, the certain programs were taken out and left it more general. The schools to use what works.
Any questions?
What's your recommendation?
What was sent and all the updates that I wrote notes on at the bottom, the way they're changed, for me, it's the radio go and we're in good shape with these.
And this is for information tonight and consider action at the School Board meeting in April. So if anybody looks over them and they have more questions, then certainly send them in. Any further discussion?
Would it be appropriate to add this to the consent agenda for the next meeting?
You can make that motion.
You can make a motion and we add this to the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
Second, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Which one are you?
All in favor?
Aye.
I do think when they're the VSBA, just those little notes that I sent are probably the easiest way for us to do this with the committee. If they're not Lynchburg City, the ones we're changing and just the VSBA so that you have the notes. And then we can do that.
Yeah, it's great.
And just make it move along.
Yep, it's great.
Mike, did you have a question?
No, I guess not really a question, just, you know, just so everybody's clear that it's on the consent agenda, but anybody can...
Just like we did tonight, yeah.
Consent agenda for discussion if there's a particular policy that you want. Even just for discussion.
You can pull it out from...
Just like we did tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. The next, thank you. The next is, you're next. Page 12, English Textbooks Adoption.
Right. Just a little bit of a word on what we do with textbook adoption. Up this year is for the, with the revised English standards, the textbook adoption is coming around for that. Every seven years, the Virginia Department of Ed does update their standards. And then the committees established there at the Department of Ed to review submitted textbooks for suitability, that they align with the state standards and are appropriate to be used in Virginia schools. We have established our committees and reviewed textbooks from kindergarten through 12th grade for that and have what was recommended in front of you. That group has really begun that work. We started with that work well before Christmas and the fall of the year and ordered in samples of those and had opportunities for teachers and parents and community members to be able to view those and rank them. You know, we're following the state criteria for how you do that because we're looking at a variety of things from alignment to representation of diversity. You know, there's just a number of criteria. It's been a very, very thoughtful process with the staff. I've been really proud of the folks that have been working on this because they've really dug in and thought about what they were doing and had great comments with that. We've, you know, of course, every, the staff is surveyed and along with everyone else, we did it digitally. So we would be able to tell which, you know, which one would be the selection. And I think we're in agreement with, even with my staff and with the folks picked. It was a clear frontrunner for both the secondary and for the elementary schools. We found the Benchmark Series to be very well aligned with what we're trying to do and also promoting writing and phonics in the lower grades. And then using the Harcourt Series, Hooten Mifflin Series for the secondary seemed to be the best fit with that. With any textbooks that we're doing now, it, the days of really just having a hardbound textbook that sits on the shelf or in a book bag are really coming to an end. They're largely a digital resource now. So there's a heavy online component where they can do that. A lot of our resource, you know, if we're needing leveled readers to work with kids on their level to remediate things, they're logging in and going to and pulling that resource up. There are a lot of, a lot of the books that they work in are consumables. So they're things that you can actually write on, annotate, circle, outline, those kind of things. And then, of course, you have your digital copy to refer to with that. And they're really making a concerted effort in both of these products to connect with kids. So there's things that look more like tweets that go out about topics that are current. And it's really entering into the digital age. So we were quite pleased with that. And we did get also, we got a group of community members in and talked with them about the, a couple of the top choices after we narrowed out the stuff that we knew wouldn't work and let them look through those as well and got input from them and explained our process. And they seemed very pleased with how we conducted that and policies we've made, so.
Are these the books that we review down in...
Yes. Yeah, they are, they are.
They're there for this month.
They will be. So I guess that's all the information I have. If we have any further questions, I have the ladies that are my supervisors that also work with the elementary choice and the secondary choice here as well.
Dr. Gupta, did you have a question?
No, I just, could we make it an action item and move it up?
Well, some of us have not had the time to review the books. And I would really like the opportunity to do that. Dr. Brennan?
Could we also take the opportunity to have your staff make some comments? I did have the ability to visit with them last week. And it really is very impressive, the process they've gone through. I think it'd be helpful for the Board to hear that. And plus, they've sat through this whole meeting very patiently. So would that be okay, Dr. Coleman?
More than okay?
If they made some comments, because I think it's very helpful. As I said, it's been seven years since we've done this process. It's a pretty big deal. And I think there's been a lot of work that's gone into it.
And a very long time for secondary schools since we've done it.
Yeah, even more than that, right. It's been, yeah, right.
I feel like it's been seven years since lunchtime.
Good evening. I'm Dixie Sears, the elementary reading, social studies, libraries, and a few other things supervisor. And this is my colleague.
I'm the secondary version of that. I'm Allison Jordan.
And as Dr. Coleman told you, we started this process in August. The reading or English one for secondary is one of the most detailed adoptions that we do. And we started out in August. We asked each school for elementary to send us, we wanted the principals on the committee. We have instructional coaches in elementary, so they're on the committee. K-2 teachers, somebody from kindergarten to second grade, and somebody from upper elementary in third through fifth grade. And we had also the instructional coach serving on it. So we, five people from each elementary school, which when you get that committee for 11 schools, that's pretty big, 55. But that's, it worked well because then they could go back and communicate to the rest of their teachers. And Ms. Dee Fretwell, our coordinator for textbooks, is always invaluable in this process because she contacts the companies that are on the state list and they send books. So they send all the books to every elementary school. We met with our large group and detailed what our process would be. We have the forms, did you bring copies of yours?
I did.
Okay. We have copies of our forms. And so you can see, we modeled that after the state's form. But we want to be sure that things are included. As Dr. Coleman mentioned, diversity. We want to be sure there's information in there for remediating if some kids don't get it or reteaching. And for elementary reading, when teachers, new teachers come in, a lot of them may have only had one class on teaching reading. So we have to be sure there's support for new teachers that would help them with teaching reading as well as for a veteran who comes in, been teaching reading for 20 years. But you want to be sure it's very supportive. When they get the books and these forms, they have teachers look at them, administrators. They invite in parents, people who are in the communities with the schools. As well as when we set them up at the administration building, Jody Gillette worked with us to invite in business and community people to look at the books. We, around January, we met again. Then we went through a process to narrow down. Because with elementary, we had five series to look at. So we narrowed down to the top two. We go back, investigate some more. And then we did an electronic ranking to come up with the top one. We recently attended in the past week or so, a VDOE literacy summit. And what they said is very important, you know, as schools are accredited based on SOL scores. But as you probably have heard, across the state, across the nation, the reading and writing scores have declined over the past few years. So they said, we need to get the scores up to be accredited. But at the same time, we need readers and writers. We need to be preparing these kids along with the five Cs and everything you hear in profile of a graduate to whether they go on to college, after high school, or whether they join the workforce, they need to be able to read and write. I mean, that's just the basics of it. They want to get back to the science of reading. Sometimes I know people say, reading's not rocket science. Well, yes, in a way it is. So that was part of our process that we went through. We came up with Benchmark. And we're happy over the next month till you meet again. If any of you want to meet with us, we met with Dr. Brennan and gave him the quick course in elementary reading. I'm sure he's ready to go now.
I got the five pillars.
The five pillars, good. That was the next thing I was going to say. The Benchmark Series, it's a balanced approach. And what that means is you have phonemic awareness when you start with little toddlers, even with nursery rhymes and sounds, they don't know anything about letters yet. Then we move on to phonics. That's our second pillar where you're associating sounds with letters. Fluency, when we read with expression, you know, we want it to sound like a conversation, like we're talking. And of course vocabulary and phon, vocabulary comprehension, I'm sure you hear a lot about. But we have the five pillars and you balance it. Sometimes you'll hear people depending on swings and they'll say, we need more phonics. Well, you can't have just phonics because then what you're going to hear is a horizontal word list. You know, you have to have the balance. And I'll let Allison talk about secondary.
Secondary had a smaller committee because it's five schools. So we had at least two teachers representative in the committee meetings. We followed the exact same process. We heard the publishers. And secondary was a little bit different because a few of them only made a list for certain grade levels. And as soon as we heard that, the committee thought, that's not, that's not going to work. So there were only three that really fit the six, 12 model that we wanted, a comprehensive, vertical, every grade level flow. So we've got the top two downstairs. HMH is by far the first choice in the product, but also the type of PD that they offer. So when you come and you meet with us, I'll be happy to explain the type of PD that that company offers is more of an embedded model to where coaches would come in and work in our classrooms with our students, with our teachers. And we've done that in a remediation environment this year. And the teachers, it's only six English teachers in our middle schools that have had that opportunity. They may not think it's an opportunity. It feels like a lot of responsibility, but let's call it an opportunity. And they have raved about that coaching. They've really liked having someone come into their classroom and see their kids using the new resource. I'm excited about the type of PD. And as Dixie said, it's been 17 years since secondary has gotten a resource. And I was so proud of the conversation. I was dreading this because textbooks aren't necessarily the most exciting thing. But I'm so proud of the secondary conversation because they really want to be good stewards of money. And they kept saying, well, we could probably go a few more years on these books. And finally, one of them said, they're disintegrating, they're falling apart. So while we could limp along with some of the resources, a few years from now, what if, what if they all are falling apart and we didn't take this opportunity? So they've been really thoughtful, like Dr. Coleman said. It's not the buy the textbooks and you can have them for 20 years. A lot of these are consumables and digital. And we've all talked about equity and whether or not all of our kids are going to be able to connect at home, at school. Is technology always the right answer? It's a neat balance between actually writing in the book and being able to annotate. And you've got to see them in person. Dr. Brennan saw them the other day. They're colorful and they are engaging. They make young adults, middle schoolers, want to read. And the selection of novels in there with the classics, but also brand-new young adult selections is really impressive. There have been years, Dr. Coleman talked about, seeing some textbook adoptions and that you're just really not interested. There's a reason why we haven't adopted for almost 20 years. This was a pretty neat process to see too, that I think we would be happy with. So I'm excited about the frontrunner, but I think everybody would be really happy with the top two that are downstairs. And I would, I would love to talk to you more about what we did and about the process. And you may want to thumb through it and see what we're expecting middle schoolers and high schoolers to do. You're no longer writing essays. You're writing emails and you're acting like a historian. And you're writing like an entrepreneur, a businessperson, maybe even some things about economics. But they're really writing and reading as if they were a certain occupation by the time that they've gotten into the secondary level.
And some of the business and community people who came in sort of got a kick out of it when, you know, if the kids are reading a story and it says, he put 20 cents in the payphone in the phone booth or the cassette that went into the tape player. And they're like, what? You know, it's, we need to kind of stay up with the times.
So you've got a selection in the seventh grade book about artificial intelligence. So it's talking about just the difference in technology over time. So we had some people that were kind of excited to look through the books. So I hope that you'll take some time and see what we have the opportunity to invest in.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes.
The question that I have, are we looking at implementing this change for next year?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to put my plug in for BASS to make sure that we are implementing this in a timely manner.
Oh, yeah.
Since they start, okay.
We got you covered.
All right.
We let these people know.
I don't.
I got this one covered.
I didn't want to have to single you out, but...
When we start talking with these people, we let them know that we have one elementary school that talks, that starts in July and we need for them to be ready. And so that doesn't mean they have to have all of them here by then, but they work with us on that. But thank you. We appreciate you looking out for BASS.
Any other comments? Thank you. This is, I hope you'll find the time to get down there to review the books and ask questions.
Yeah, just email or call us, we'll be happy to meet you, right, Dr. Brennan?
Right, you were very happy to meet us. Before this goes, I was an English major, so I have a little more interest in it than maybe some other people. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goes to next capital improvement plan, window blind replacement.
Part of the fund balance request was $150,000 for window blinds. We identified a few schools initially, Bedford Hills, Paramount, Deerington, and portions of Dunbar. The bids went out. You can see the numbers there. The lowest bidder withdrew due to error. The second lowest was deemed non-responsive and was pulled. So we still have a great price of $71,000 to do that initial work. And then we will use the current bid and look at what the next schools will be and consume the rest of the $79,000 to replace blinds in other schools. So it is up for action tonight so we can get started and get things moving if the Board would approve it.
Any questions?
What is a mathematical error?
Miscalculated the number.
$22,000.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what they did, but $22,000 is not even close.
So this is up for action tonight. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Are we voting online? Mine's telling me that my server has been lost.
Yes, I just lost it.
Please log back in.
Oh, I did. I haven't gotten the book. I had to log back in.
I don't know.
Everybody timed out during the break.
Did you send it?
Did you send it?
Did you get a vote? I haven't had anything come up. Mine's come up every time. What's that doing right there?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Next is the NRG Power Pay Demand Response Program. Mr. Gasky? This one is really interesting.
My whole world is interesting.
We have been at this for three hours now, haven't we? Sorry.
A while back, we were approached by NRG, and that's all it stands for, energy. Anyhow, to join up with their demand response program. Now, NRG, they handle the energy reduction program, or whatever you want to call it, for AEP. So what they do is they get commercial customers to volunteer to reduce your electric consumption during times of grid stress. Peak usage during the summer generally, when everybody's running their air conditioning in the afternoon and it's been 100 degrees for three days. And they need to reduce the demand on the system. The theory behind it is that it's cheaper to pay the customer to reduce your usage than it is to build more power plants. So that's the, that's the goal behind the program. We have a chance to get a little money from. I'll go through this PowerPoint very quickly. The, the first part of it is, is basically public relations materials for NRG. They are a national Fortune 500 company. They do a lot in energy, other than, they do more than just the demand response. They're also one of the largest energy generators and transmission companies. And so this is just part of their, of what they do. As you can see, they have quite a few companies, the country, clients, excuse me. The country is kind of divided up into regions and there's different companies that handle different regions. You see 6,500 participating facilities. One of those, I'm told, is Lynchburg General. So we're not alone here in Lynchburg in doing this. As I said, it's cheaper to pay, pay the customers to reduce their consumption during times of peak usage than it is to build new plants. So what, the, the end result is to take the stress off the grid and be sustainable. So what they will do is, energy, if we go into this agreement with them, they'll come in and put their meters on the buildings that we decide would be good candidates for this program. I'm anticipating it would be our five largest buildings, which are the secondary schools. It could go, we could go into some of the elementaries, we'll have to wait and see. They will put their own meters on it, they will take a baseline, and then everything is compared off the baseline. They will come up with a reduction action plan that will be within our input. They don't just force it on you. We, we agree to the level of reduction that we're looking for. At such time, once we have the agreement and the levels in place, if they call and say, okay, we haven't, we're having a, an issue with peak demand, we need you to reduce, we have about a half hour, 15 minutes to do that, and we need to respond right away. If we do not, so if we reduce, and for the period, and it could be up to 12 hours and an actual brownout, if you want to call it that, it could be up to 12 hours. If we do it at the end of the period, which is, would be the end of the summer, we would get a payment for our participation in the program. If we do not participate, they call and they, we say, no, we got summer school going on in that building, I can't reduce. We don't get paid for it, that's it. We are under no obligation. It is a five-year contract, but if we do not participate, if we sign up and for whatever reason, we end up not participating this summer, we just roll over into next summer. And we can participate then. It's totally volunteer, and it's totally, we control whether we want to do it or not. And then, like I said, at the end of the period, which runs June through September, at the end of that, if we, based on our performance, we would get a check. These are just some of the things that they recommend in order to meet our goals. Reducing or cutting off the air, air conditioning, or, or raising the temperature up to 80 degrees, setting off lights, other equipment that you don't need, just to reduce your power usage during that period. The nice little thing there for, for me, is that we get to access their dashboard and we can see how the performance of our buildings on, as far as electrical consumption, on a real-time basis. I love that sort of stuff. Anyhow, and they also, like I said, they're into, to a lot of other things, they have other energy solutions and whatever. So this next slide here, it's just their estimate. Well, I can't read that. Anyhow, it's just their estimate of what we could possibly realize in a two-year period through this. And the, I think it's five, is it five, 250 megawatts?
Yeah.
The top one, you'll see that that pays off at about 28,000 over a two-year period. And all that means is if we participate and we reach that level, which that's a small amount, I don't think we would have a problem qualifying for that level. At the end of the first year, we would get, covering that first column, I'm sorry, I, I can't read from here. But anyhow, it comes out to about 28,000 over the two-year period. This is very similar to, it, it's the commercial version of AEP's residential program that they have of bring your own thermostat. If you have a smart thermostat in your house, you can sign up with AEP. And they can control your air conditioning from their offices. This is like that, but different in that they will, we do the controlling. They can, they will not be accessing our controls or anything directly. They call us, we respond. This is, we did ask for, I mean, this is up for information tonight. It is somewhat time-sensitive, so if we could get approval this evening, it would just help the process. Any questions? Yes.
Dr. Coleman, I'm sorry.
Dr. Coleman, I know you always like to make sure things are turned off properly and so forth. Does this seem like it's gonna be of value for us in the long run?
A lot of it is down to the timing of when that emergency might hit. But if you can meet their needs, you're getting.
And make money.
So I, it's not gonna hurt us in any way to participate, and it has the potential to help us. That's why Mr. Gasky has brought it forward.
I would like to, I did, one thing I did not say is that in the last five years, they have not had an incident or had to call for a reduction anywhere in the state. So it doesn't happen a lot. We would have to participate in a test, that it's a two-hour test in July. As long as we participate in that, that's, we get the, we're in the program and we get the, the money at the end of the period.
Mr. Harvey?
I was just gonna say, I have a client that, that did a similar program. One of the things that they did was, they took the, the revenue that they received and reinvested it, you know, they started out with going with LED lights and so forth. So it allowed them to replace all of their lights in their facility, which then in turn cut their energy costs. So it's, it's this cyclical thing. It's, it's a good program to participate in.
How does this tie into our strategic plan?
It fits in with, I think.
Financial responsibility?
3.3.
Yeah.
In terms of our energy conservation program.
Right.
Bringing that up.
Yeah. I think it's great.
Any additional questions, Dr. Sanai?
So help me just think about this. Most of our peak demand here in Virginia would likely be in the summertime?
Yes.
So a lot of our buildings are offline, more or less, or are they, for whatever reason, you have to keep them going?
Actually, we have things going on in our buildings.
All right.
We're really not.
Just me, never mind.
Especially, especially our secondary.
Yeah.
School buildings, they're going all summer.
Yep.
And they're, they're cleaning their.
Right, that's true.
There are a lot of things.
Dr. Coleman?
You may have already stated earlier, is there any other school divisions that you've given us specific information? The 28,000 savings, I believe I heard, that's coming from them themselves?
Yes.
You have all data on what the student.
We won't, we won't know how much our potential savings will be until they come in and survey our schools, take a look at our bills. Because it's a volunteer program and we can back out at any time, they're gonna wait until they got a commitment from us to put in the resources to come in and, and set everything up and whatever. But it's a, it's a no-risk agreement for us. And, you know, it's only positives there. But as far as the, the projection, I do not anticipate, at least initially, to reach that 28,000 or whatever. It's gonna be a, you know, for us, it's gonna be a, there's gonna be a learning curve as far as what we can turn off and whatever. We don't have to shut, we don't have to shut down any buildings or anything, it's just reduce your, your energy consumptions. Raise your thermostats, shut off areas where you can. So like I said, I, I think it's a positive for us all the way around.
Dr. Brennan?
I think it sounds like a great program and that the administration has really looked into it very thoroughly. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the NRG Power Plan Demand Response Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions, Dr. Nellis?
Some of these, I mean, I'm not sure how much power reduction you would be called on. How are, how do you anticipate managing that? I mean, you're gonna go around, shut down, and just shut down elevators and.
Well.
Turn off lights?
Right.
I mean, you don't have a central, you know, like you can control all.
I can control.
We can.
We can control all the heating and air conditioning from our office.
Okay.
I can control the lights at Sandusky Middle and Heritage High from my own.
Okay. So it's.
There are some.
So it's not, no, it's not that.
Doable without.
It is doable. Right.
Send out an army of people.
Right, it's the digital controls that allow you to change set points across an entire building at the push of a button.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay. It's up on our computer.
All right. You're doing great.
Is that the first one tonight, James? Are we all in?
No. I had to log back in.
I sent it.
I know, but it went off somehow.
I just hit yes.
Just hit yes.
Yeah, right, Sharon. And you're getting good at that.
Well, I hit, I hit yes. I don't know where it is. It's out there. You're laughing, but it's true.
Floating around.
Like next year before we get a report on?
Well, they have to come in during the summer and do an evaluation, and this just gets the ball rolling.
How do we know who's voted what way or what way? Like Corin River said.
A little square with the yellow dot.
All right. Do you have everybody's vote?
Oh, I see it down. But I mean, for the public, how do they see?
It'll be, we'll eventually have it up on the screen.
Okay. At the very bottom of that.
All right, that moves us to superintendent's comments.
You mean down here?
No, you have to be on what we were on.
Given the hour, I will be brief. The parent advisory council met on February 12th. The bulk of our time was spent going over the voluntary review. So the parents were, we took them through the same flow chart that we did the board and they gave us feedback. And we had a very rich discussion, very positive comments and questions, and they were just really great to work with. So I, I really do thank the parents for giving us that positive feedback. At the end, most of them agreed that with regard to the volunteer process, one of the questions was, will there be an opt-out? And the parents pretty much said that's probably not appropriate, that if you get approved to be a volunteer, you're a volunteer, that, you know, that, that kind of thing. And they were, for the most part, pretty pleased with the thoroughness and we answered all their questions. So again, thanks for that. Some other things that they just talked about or inquired about were the GPS app on our bus, SFI applications, they, they wanted to put in a plug for more world languages across the board. There were some questions about the Go Center versus gifted opportunities at each school and whether or not we were considering that, and then some transportation questions. So just a really great meeting. Personnel advisory also met on that day, and I think Mr. Luce kind of talked about their number-one thing, which is behavior, response to behavior. And I will say, in some of our budget presentations, when we get to them next week, you'll see some things that we put in place to address behavior, to make sure that kids have resources. And again, that's one of the number-one things that we're talking about, in addition to drama training. And there's a list of things that individual personnel brought up during that meeting. And again, thank the staff for meeting with me to discuss those items. There are a couple of things that should be available for the public to see, as well as me quickly discussing them, I'm not gonna read them all. But the first is the census, and I know Dr. Jordan was here, and she's gone to the, the schools over the past week to really work with the schools on some of the activities for the census, so that everyone can be counted. There's a link on our board docs to some additional information that is available on the city site for anyone who wants to know more about the census and how participating in the census helps us with education. There's also a notice that we are going out for the 21st Century Learning Grants. There's information in here that we have to have a public notice, that we are not only seeking to restore our grant at Dunbar Middle School, we can apply for up to four grants. And I think we are gonna do four grants this year. The upcoming information in terms of, well, let me skip that one, I'll go down. Tomorrow, we are having a ribbon cutting for the gym at Bedford Hills, one of our CIP projects. That will be tomorrow at 2:30. And then Thursday at Sheffield at 5:30. And I got a sneak peek in Bedford Hills today, and it looks awesome. So if you could be there, it's gonna be great for our kids to have that. Also, we have on March 17th is going to be our budget discussion with the board. At that time, my team and I, we will take you through the nuances of the budget. We'll talk about our budget. the budget. We'll talk about our budget procedure. We met with the principals and school staff, bookkeepers, office managers, and a little bit of everybody yesterday, and sort of unveiled the new budget process. And you will see a difference in how the schools are funded. We'll also talk about the revenue. Kim's presented some of that. We're waiting on the governor's budget. We've made no secret that we are asking city council for flat funding and 42 million, again, going forward. And that 42 million is inclusive of the pay tables that you put in over the last year. And our promise to our staff that we would continue to sort of bump it up. And I think, again, Mr. Luce being here earlier mentioned something about having quality staff and making sure that we can pay our staff accordingly. So we do wanna move forward with that. So, I'm encouraging everybody to come out on March 17th to join us to learn more about the budget. Following the discussion with the board is when we'll have that public hearing. So if the public wants to come out to the board meeting, hear the board discussion, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing immediately after that. And then I will probably be traveling from place to place. I don't have a set schedule yet, just to talk to anyone who wants to talk to me about the budget. I am scheduled to present to city council on March 24th. And of course, it's gonna be standing room only because I'm inviting all my friends to come and join me at city council on March 24th. And city council's public hearing on the budget is March 31st. And again, feel free to join me with that. So that is the information, quick pieces. Just a couple highlights. Over the past week, I've had the opportunity just to be with kids, which is why I do this job. I went to the Optimist Club luncheon, and that's always a great event. I'm sure Mr. Harvey will add to that when we get to board comments. But I just love seeing our kids and our staff just be celebrated and highlighted and just networking with everyone there. So thank you to the Optimist Club and all the volunteers who put that together. It's a wonderful event. I also got to go to the Miller Center for the student recognition program that we had there with all of our students. And again, one community, one voice, police department, fire department, sheriff's department, mayor, Lynchburg City Schools, and a whole bunch of volunteers. Again, taking time on a Sunday to celebrate our kids and their accomplishments is always great. Made sure I stopped by something that had some food. So I was at SES for their numbers of nachos night, which was packed. I'm pleased to say that there was no parking in SES parking lot. I had to park it in the middle school and walk across. But that's just a tribute to, when people say we don't have parent involvement, they should've been there because there was parent involvement, grandparent involvement, auntie, uncle, friends, a little bit of everyone. And it was a really, really great night of just a lot of critical thinking that night. So I was glad to participate in that as well. And looking forward to going to a few other things as time permits.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I was supposed to make one other major announcement, because everybody's probably waiting for this. I know my families probably already know, because I believe earlier this evening, both high school principals sent out a message to their families, letting them know that we will host graduation at City Stadium. This year, Heritage High School will graduate at nine, and EC Glass High School will graduate at six. We're trying to avoid the hot times in the middle of the day. I will reiterate that the decision was based on both principals talking with their students, staff, and teams. And it was the majority of the students and families expressed that they want to invite more family members to join in on the celebration. So by having it at City Stadium, we do not have to limit tickets. So you can bring your families. But I have to add the caution, 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 and that is weather. And weather is more than just rain. So we will be monitoring the weather. We will issue what we call weather tickets in advance to students so that they can share those with their families. In the event, we have to make a weather call, which we will do 24 hours in advance, so that that will give our staff enough time to be prepared and no one's scrambling minutes before. If we have to issue a weather call, we will have graduation back at both base schools, and we will have to use the weather tickets. That's the drawback to this plan. Hopefully, we'll have a beautiful day and beautiful evening, have both graduations. But I will be making sure that everyone understands the weather ticket policy. Should we have graduation at?
The 31st.
Yes, it is on the 31st. And that was my really important.
All right. Thank you. Board comments?
I just have a quick question. So the next work session is the budget.
Yes. Also, this school climate survey results.
Right. So I just, in my own head, so I know and people know, when are we going back to the volunteer policy and the discrimination policy? Would be my question.
April 7th.
April 7th.
Board meeting.
Okay.
So it's not on the work session?
No, it's on the.
April.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Gupta, do you have anything?
You have, she asked you, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. I just had this question.
Oh. So for last few weeks, I've been on a mission to go through a school's accreditation documents, which is Virginia University of Lynchburg. The reason was because they're not part of Beacon of Hope. And it was not clear to me why they're not getting benefits of Beacon of Hope scholarships. And I found out they are accredited different. They are approved by the Department of Education for student loans. They're approved by the State Council of Higher Education in Virginia. So they meet all the legal guidelines to get any federal loans. Correct me if I'm wrong. And state subsidies as any other student, any other university will require. So that's what I was asking Dr. Brennan, as Beacon of Hope, to see if he can pursue that VUL should be counted as part of Beacon of Hope scholarship.
Right. We're gonna be well-positioned to ask that question.
Dr. Brennan?
Just briefly, Dr. Edwards and I talked about this the other day, but as an infectious physician, I understand that the city and Lynchburg City Schools are working together to address the coronavirus epidemic. And I would just encourage Lynchburg City Schools to use this as an educational opportunity to contact our families to say that we are gonna address this appropriately, that there are certain basic factors we understand about this, being similar to influenza, and be reassuring with that. And I think communication from us would be a great thing.
Yes. And Banjo went to a joint meeting today, so I will touch base with her tomorrow. She has her handbook from previous when we had H1N1, MRSA, some others. So she's on it. She's ready.
Great. That's great. And I also had the same question that Ms. Evans did. And Ms. Townsend, are we gonna get the information that you were gonna gather for us before that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harvey?
Okay. As Dr. Edwards mentioned, I was able to participate in the Optimist Club Career Tech Education Recognition Luncheon that was held on February 25th, where 10 high school students from Heritage and EC Glass were recognized. And I'd like to read those names off real quickly and the career tech programs that they're involved in. Marketing education is Jalen Thomas. Building trades was Eli Yule. Automotive service technology, Andrew Simon. Cosmetology, Jasmine Goud. Nurses aide, Brianna Ross. Air Force, JROTC, Brandon Ferris. Culinary arts is Eli Friend. Engineering was Ann Townsend. Robotics, nuclear engineering, Cy Pappas. And criminal justice was Amir Pryor. Both the students and the instructors really represented LCS very well at this event. And I was very proud of LCS at this event. It was just, just to hear some of these, some of the stories of these students, it's amazing. And their GPAs, and I mean, it was, it was good for our community business leaders to be able to see that. Also, I have a governor's school board meeting tomorrow. I got to participate in EC Glass Theater presentation, The Heart of Robinhood. I hope others got to see that as well. That was a great presentation about how sometimes even the good guys lose their way, and they need to be reminded of their purpose. I also wanna put in a plug for Heritage Pioneer's Theater upcoming presentations of Never the Sinner and Agnes of God. They're gonna be running this weekend, both evening and night shows. And you can go to LynchburgTickets.com. I'm gonna be going Friday evening, because it was really interesting. I believe, Dr. Coleman, you also received an invitation from the young man who was Ebenezer Scrooge at the winter presentation. So I appreciate that the fact that the students are actually reaching out to us as individual school board members. And I'm gonna make this a little briefer than I originally planned to, but one of the things I was gonna focus on was for my sharing what I've learned about LCS was gonna be the education foundation. And so it was a great presentation that we had this evening to see the education foundation really in, you know, in process there. So we also have the breakfast within superintendent coming up. And I've heard it's a very good speaker. So I encourage everyone to attend that event. But one of the things that's really interesting is that breakfast raises about $35,000 to $40,000 for our education foundation. And a lot of that money then gets distributed back to our schools. So our teachers, I'm sure you've probably seen some of the emails, where they have the Tools for Schools program, where they, teachers can go shopping to get supplies for their classrooms. Also, they provide supplies for students at the start of the year. And they provide some grants for teachers to try innovative things in their classrooms. And those grants typically range $500 to $2,000, and they can be as high as $5,000. But one perfect example of how the education foundation really helps out is in association with the James River Association, where our eighth-grade students got to do the canoe trip. So there are opportunities when, that are presented to our students that come through our education foundation. So I encourage our community to continue to support the education foundation and what it does for LCS.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I have one question regarding the 21st Century Grants. Are those all of the ones that we have now, or just the ones that are on rotation for renewal?
Three of them. So we have Perrymont, TC Miller, and Linkhorn are the ones that we have. Dunbar is a new one that we're.
So the other ones would stay in place? Okay. Well, I just wanted to say, you mentioned Sandusky Elementary, the turnout they had. And I think we always talk about where to host events. And I think maybe, maybe we need to look at the bright spots. That is one. So just hosting an event there, they always have a wonderful turnout. And I heard the nachos, nachos and numbers was not as large as they normally do. So they normally have huge turnouts. And so just congratulations to Dr. Womack, Mr. Womack and his team. And that's all.
Are you sure? Dr. Sina?
Well, I have a comment on something that's kind of personal to me. But I was appointed to the school board back in February 2017. In my first board meeting, I joined at an odd time because I was finishing out a prior member's term. But my first meeting was a joint meeting of the board and city council. And we broke into small groups to talk about things that we could do to help close the performance gap. And in my small group happened to be Joan Foster, mayor of Lynchburg at the time. And one of the things that she was really enthusiastic about or thought we should really do is have preschool education for every child. Now, why am I bringing this up? Because my child's preschool is closing. Little Wings is closing. And, you know, it's a special place because with funding from United Way, Head Start children could go there. And let me tell you something. You cannot tell the difference between my daughter, who's economically and academically advantaged by virtue of my career in education, my wife's career in education, and the other students there. I can't tell you who's Head Start and who's not. But I will tell you that these kids do have a Head Start and a tremendous leg up on kids who don't have this opportunity. Now, there was an article in the news advance about it, and if their statistics are correct, you know, for zero to three-year-old kids, there are only 344 slots for an estimated 2,800 children in that age group. So that's one slot for every eight kids. And for the three to five group, which my daughter just joined yesterday when she turned three, there are 977 slots for 1,940 children, which is a little bit better, one slot for every two children.
Still.
So I would like to propose to the legislative advocacy group to really look at that as a way of, you know, it is just so important for these kids to get this early socialization into the classroom and the reading. And they just do all kinds of wonderful things there. It's fascinating. And I really feel sad that this special place is closing because it affects me personally. But it really, really highlighted, just, you know, we're called a private, or preschool desert for the zero to three age group. So we really, if we're gonna solve the performance gap, it has to start at an early age. And so I'd like us to push that. And early education is in our strategic plan, so it's appropriate to discuss. So.
Our budget too, is my thing.
Well said.
Thank you, Kim. Dr. Nillis?
Yep.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, very quickly, we have talked tonight at various points about equity in our schools and therefore our community as well. And so I just think it's so important that Dr. Edwards mentioned about the census, because we need to, you know, abilities to make sure everybody's counted. And I just want to say to Christopher, Chris, that you're staying with us at the end of these meetings. It speaks volumes to me and of your generation. I want to thank Dr. Gupta for mentioning Virginia University of Lynchburg, because as we are doing our community audits, various aspects, everything is needed if in fact we're going to run alongside what Dr. Sina just said, with this opportunity or achievement gap. I do want to also acknowledge in the Virginia High School League, which I'm a part of that executive committee, there was mentioning of Senate Bill 677 that passed, which allows this whole new certification of those who change their gender. And that in the meeting, almost a whole page here is reflected in my report, is dedicated towards the Virginia High School League now giving serious discussion on their transgender policy. So I just thought I would bring that to our attention. Also, March the 16th, Southern Region, I know everybody's gonna be there at that. And alongside Nancy, this July the 8th Legislative Position Committee meeting will be in Charlottesville. And hopefully this year, we'll have some submissions to take to the state level. Thank you for letting me share those brief reflections.
Thank you. The next school board meeting. Oh, I do want to show you something. I've got this really cute card. And I wanna read, it says, Dear School Board, we are, we are learning and having fun at our school. Thank you for helping us. We are going to kindergarten next. And this is the Hutcherson kids.
That's really good.
Look at that writing.
That's really good.
So.
Let's hear it for them.
That's why we sit here for four hours, right?
With the superintendent.
You're gonna be there walking Saturday.
Yeah. If you're walking Saturday, it's, I mean, I'm.
I'm gonna be walking.
Let me get, the next school board work session is scheduled on Tuesday, March 17th at 5:00 PM in the boardroom. As I said, we are gonna do the school climate survey and budget. There'll be the public budget hearing at 7:15. And next school board meeting will be on Tuesday, April 7th at 5:00. Ms. Missouri, do we have discipline meetings this Thursday?
Yes.
Oh, and that's right when Sheffield time would, so we, I think we have three.
It's right when what?
The Sheffield gym is going to be dedicated.
I'm gonna go to that proposal. So if somebody is doing it in the cupboard.
Okay. Okay. Three. Okay. We are adjourned. Have a nice evening. Rest of it. Have a nice evening, rest of it.